Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Commission for July 25th. Roll call, please.
Sure. Commissioner Bessler?
Here.
Commissioner Stoker?
Here.
Commissioner Mason?
Here.
Commissioner Jim Schaefer?
Here.
Commissioner Lemke?
Here.
Commissioner Parrish?
Here.
Commissioner Becky Schaefer?
Here.
Alderman Adams?
Here.
We have a quorum. The first item is approval of the June 13th minutes. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Minutes are approved. Moving on to our regular business, first item is Gene Chickman and Derico McFabisvillee, 102-49 North Wildwood Court. Specimen tree removal. The applicant is seeking approval to remove seven specimen trees for the property at 10249 Wildwood Court. Jack?
Do you want to bring the applicant here? Yeah, please.
Okay.
So this is a request to remove specimen trees. In total, the request is for 10 specimen trees. Three of those were already granted approval, though, during the plating of the Wildwood subdivision, so he's asking for the seven additional trees to be removed. Our city forester did go out and visit the site, and he did determine that there was actually three trees that do not have, that do not need required approval from the Planning Commission. Two are diseased and dead or dying, and one of them is mismarked as a specimen tree. So basically, that leaves us with four additional trees that the applicant is requesting. The city forester's report basically states that he does not recommend approval of the removal of these trees. Three of them are well outside the footprint of the building. I have the screen up on the, or the picture up on the screen that shows the trees with the numbers on it. I know it's kind of tough to see, but you can see one of the trees is in this area, one of them's down this location, one of them's up in here, one of them's a little tight to the back. But overall, his recommendations deny removal of these trees. We went through the whole Wildwood Preserve approval process. We slated out a building pad area that would accommodate a reasonably sized home. In this case, the applicant can fit the home on the property, but the reason for the removal of the trees is to accommodate the proposed patio that comes along with the existing home. So in this case, the forester recommends denial of the removal of the additional trees. And if the commission does recommend approval, replacement value equal to 92 inches is recommended. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Go to the applicant. Want to make any comments?
Can we talk about why we wanted to remove the trees?
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me? She just wants to talk about. Just say yes.
Sir, go right ahead.
Can you hear me now? Sorry. The trees, the 245 and 243 are too close to the house, and we believe with the excavation, the roots are going to be damaged. The 245 and 243 in the back and in front of the house.
It's 245. Is this location 243 is up in here?
Yes, that's correct. 245 and 243. And then 234 and 230 is too close to the driveway, and also, we are worried that the roots are going to be damaged to the trees.
230 is up in this area.
Yes, it's on the way. The 230 is on the driveway.
Four is located in over this area.
230 is on the driveway. There is, there is a tree, 229, that we're not going to be removing because 230 is next to it, and we, the actual driver is going to be on 230 instead of 229, so we kind of, we're saving 229 instead of 230 because 230 is the only way to put the driveway in, to build a pathway to the house.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Is 229 one of the original three? That when the plat for Wildwood was approved?
Well, we didn't slate specific trees. We just allowed them to remove three based on a footprint, but they could mix and match those three trees. The threes that were chosen in this case were all in the center here where we anticipated that the house would go. I believe it would have been these three right up in here.
So when you say you're saving 229 instead of 230, I'm trying to understand where the swap is coming, if there was only three generic trees that were originally approved.
No, I meant by saving because that's the only entrance to the property to build the driveway. And instead of removing 229, because it's kind of on, instead of asking to remove 229 because it's right on the corner where the driveway should be, we'll build the driveway a little around it, but 230 will be on the way of the driveway.
And I think the forester was out there, and he felt that there was adequate room between the two to get a driveway through there, and as long as tree protection fencing was installed to protect the trees during construction, then they would survive.
Where's the driveway coming in?
We don't have that plan yet, but I assume it's going to be coming in through here, like this way.
Between those two trees?
Yeah.
Because the trees are white pines, and they're very, very wide. The, they spread out very widely, and they take a lot of property, like around it, so it's hard to put a driveway between the 229 and 230 because the leaves and the, roots can be covering the driveway.
I did have, they always notify the people so far away, so I've had a few phone calls from the neighborhoods on both sides on this, where people are basically, you know, they knew this when they bought their lot. But I also want to, you know, work with these people. And you may notice, we have a new forester, and frankly, I think he did an excellent job giving us the knowledge to make this decision. It's hard, but I do feel that the tree preservation guidelines, they're there for the landscapers to follow the rules, and there's great root protection involved. And I also know the forester works to make sure, because he's not going to deny someone a driveway, but he often works with them, we have for decades, to shift a little bit here or there. So I, right now, can only support the three trees that he listed, and then the other four, I really would like you to try to work around. Do your best to protect the trees, the root zones, as the tree preservation guidelines provide. I know that's what the residents wanted, and, you know, hopefully it'll hold up. If not, the trees, they'll be there at least five years. When you do go over roots, the pre-preservation guideline should keep them alive, and if for some reason there is a mistake, you will have a long time still with the tree, giving him a chance to survive.
I would just add, some of the original developed, the houses that were developed in Wildwood, that had some trees fairly close to the driveways, they seem to be doing okay at this point as well. I mean, it's still only a few years, but many of them are still doing pretty well. And I don't know if you recall the Cantor property, there was one basically in the center of a circular drive that was fairly narrow, and that one is still surviving and doing pretty well at this point, so.
I actually took some pictures. I don't know if I can show them to you how wide those trees are. The white pines, they actually take a lot of property around them. They're maybe 14, 15 feet in diameter, once they're all spread out. So I do have pictures, and that's what actually, what's covering a lot of property around it. That way, we won't be able to have the driveway in between, and same thing on 234 tree and 243 and 245. They're, branches may be too close to the building, to the house.
Excuse me, what's the distance between the trunks of the two trees?
The two...
Does engineering have that fact?
No.
Because I was told that you would have that kind of stuff if the foresters not here. We may want him in the future.
The 245 is about 10, 10 feet away from the house line. The 243 is about 18 feet away, and 234 is 15 feet away.
Yeah, that's from the proposed house. That's not from a known point out there. I mean...
I, I thought the concern is about running the driveway between the two trees. Is that correct?
That's a different tree.
If that's the problem, what's the distance between the two trees?
Oh, between the 229 and, no, the 229 and 230.
I mean, we, when we originally, again, laid these out, the applicant that developed the subdivision provided us driveway maps for every single lot that showed that a driveway could enter the site without impacting the trees that were there.
I see.
So based on that, and based on our forester's visit to the site, I think we're comfortable to say that there is room on the property to get a driveway to the house without impacting the trees.
Sounds reasonable to me, based on what you're telling me.
And I did ask the applicant to provide, you know, as much detail as possible with regard to the proposal, and this is what I was given as part of the application, so this is all the data that I have.
I think the proposed houses that were showed in the beginning were much smaller than these houses, and it was a little bit on the side of the property. Maybe that's why the driveway didn't make that much effect as, as right now with our plans of the house.
Yeah, I feel like I'm starting to do work that the forester had in his hand when he made this decision. I'm, just to keep things moving along, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and give permission for the removal of three specimen trees that the forester recommended, 232, 244, and 236, but deny permission for 245, 230, 243, and 234.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion from the commission?
Question. So can you tell us the distance between 229 and 230? Could you put a driveway of 13 feet between those two trees?
Driveway might be possible, but as I said, it's white pines, and their branches are too wide, widely spread out. So even for, I would say, any machinery to escalators or anything to come into the property, they would have to go between, between the 229 and 230, and there is not enough space, and same as putting a driveway.
Jack, are they allowed to trim the trees?
Well, they can trim up, but there's also, you know, that's not the only path into the property. You can go north of 220, 229, and enter the property through there, and up towards the property line if there was a concern over equipment and things like that. You know, that's, there's enough room there. That dash line there is at least 30 feet. There's enough room to get equipment to the north of that without disturbing any other trees that are there.
It's not only about the equipment. We're looking to replant, actually, a lot of trees down the borderline. Once we remove this specimen trees, we're looking to replant a lot of trees, and that's why we picked actually this lot, because it was so wooded, but we didn't know it might be affecting the building, but we're looking to replant a lot of trees down the borderline. And I don't think, it might be a big concern about the machinery to come into the property, but actual driveway, not going to have enough space, as we looked in with the architect, there is not going to have enough room between 229 and 230. And 230 is a 13-inch wide, white pine. 229 is much older, it's 21-inch, so that's why we are trying to keep it on the property, the older tree, the 21-inch.
Any other discussion? We have a motion to allow three and deny four, following the forester's recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, sir. Good luck. Next item is King Fogel Construction for Jonathan and Marie Homer. The applicant is seeking approval to remove two specimen trees for the property located at 10263 North Wildwood Court.
This one's a little bit easier to read, not as many trees up as the last one. This is a request for a total of three. The applicant was already allowed to remove one as part of their previous development. Now they're asking to remove two. The two trees in question, one is located right here within the driveway footprint, and the other one is located back here, which would be at the rear of the house. In this case, the forester visited the site. We talked at length about the project, and we feel like the applicant did a pretty good job of trying to take the trees into consideration with the placement of the house. So in this case, the recommendation is to allow for the removal of one additional tree for the driveway turnaround, but to not allow removal of the one at the back end of the house and put tree protection fencing along that one as well during construction. Again, same requirements with regard to replacement value and things like that if the commission decides to approve all three. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Go to the applicants. Want to make some comments?
Hi, I'm Jay with King Fogel Construction Company. We, I guess on that tree, what is it, number 227? It's just real close to the building. It's a huge tree. It's going to negatively impact the house. You know, they're going to have their patio back there and partial exposure, and it's just going to negatively impact their house. It's just too close. It's a huge tree. We'd like to have permission to take that one out, I guess, and would be willing to negotiate, you know, for the removal of it, if we can.
Excuse me, what, what direction is it with respect to the house? North, south, east, west?
Um, north. It's just, it's right on top of the, once the house would be constructed, it's right on top of it.
And I think we did talk a little about this, but I think there's a little bit of an ability to shift the house a little further to the south to maybe put a little bit more distance in between that tree and the house. There are some other specimen trees down in here, but they're a little bit further away, so we felt that one was, again, worth trying to preserve.
Mr. Schaefer?
Wildwood keeps, so you guys are not the first that have come forward
Sure.
in that subdivision, even after all the work. This predates my time on the commission, but my understanding is there was a lot of work that went in to developing, developing that area, knowing, knowing the kind of area that it is, and all of the, and all of the trees, and just kind of the age and nature of those trees. My question is, when you're, I'm wondering if, how much the developers divulging of the work that went in and the understanding, you know, this other applicant mentioned the house plan being a lot smaller than what they expected. I wonder how much discussion is going on, because it seems like there's a continued, either lack of understanding, or maybe just, hopefully not, but maybe just disregard for what might have been told during the sales process. I understand that, you know, once you're there and you're trying to figure out how you want to build your house, that things shift a little bit, but it's a pattern that's been repeated over the last two years.
Well, I know that, I can only speak for us. Yep. I'm actually the purchaser of the land, and before we purchased the land, we had our builder come out and put the house on the land first, and then we actually met with, I believe his name was Ken, was he the old forester?
Yep.
Okay, so we met with Ken, and we actually worked with Ken, and we changed the placement of the house. We also changed the placement of the driveway to preserve as many trees as we could. So we did, we walked the lot with Ken, and he'd tell us about the different trees, and he pointed out ones that we definitely would want to try to keep, and we had many discussions with him, and that's, I think, one of the reasons why this gentleman said your house is placed nicely on the land, is because we did go out there with Ken.
Yes, agree, and I think, and that's appreciated. Was that, but you were aware of it when you purchased, like the, it's being, it's not buyer beware, there's full disclosure.
Right, no, we were aware that we were allowed to take down one, and it was phrased in such a way that you could possibly, probably take down more as long as you gave money to the
Sure.
land trust
Yep.
or replaced the trees.
But that's helpful for me to understand.
Yeah.
Is there any, as, as Jack said, is there an opportunity to shift it south a little bit? Shift your building pads south a little to preserve that tree?
He can probably speak a little bit more to that, but there are some specimen trees also east of the driveway, so we were trying to kind of snake our driveway in through. So if we shift our house more forward, we may run into some problems with
On that side?
driveway placement again.
What kind of tree is it?
White pine.
White pine?
All white pines.
So it's on the north side of the house, so it's not really providing you any summer shade, but it does provide some of a winter windbreak.
I...
Alderman Adams?
It's, like I said, the forester, I think, is just so clear. It's hard for me not to go with his recommendation. He's been on the site. Says the tree seems to be adequate distance away from the proposed pad of the house, that it can be spared. It's our understanding this particular tree will need to be removed for landscape purposes. Landscape purposes do not pose a need to remove said specimen tree. So he's denying it, giving the landscaping can be adjusted, and the position of the specimen tree cannot. And he doesn't even mention that perhaps the house could go a little bit south. I do know that, the history of this, obviously, I know the pads are a little bit bigger, which is one reason I've been, on occasion, maybe letting one go. But I do know that this whole subdivision would have had many more houses had it not been for the specimen trees. That is what limited the amount of lots in the, in the west area, not the zoning, but I believe the preserve, preservation of specimen trees. So I, at this point, I'm going to go ahead just to keep things moving and move that, excuse me, we approve the two trees that the forester recommends and deny the one that the forester recommends.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, further discussion?
I have a, I have a question about the tree right now in the driveway, like the turnaround area. Would you be able to work around that tree? I think it's number... 218?
Yeah, 218.
Right there.
I guess my comment on that would be possibly, yes, we could shift the house to the east, and then, you know, we really want to try and get rid of that tree number 227. That's kind of our main goal for the house versus that one that would be 218, I think. Would you agree, Marty, or?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I mean, we'll be closer to the neighbors. I don't know if the neighbors will like it as much.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be closer to the neighbors, but...
On the east side, we have neighbors, and on the west side of the house, there's a, an out.
Yeah, a buffer.
A buffer zone.
There's nobody next to them.
Yeah, so what we're trying to do is also to push a little bit further west, just to give those neighbors more space between the two houses.
What, what is the problem with the tree north of the house? And secondly, how far is your neighbor north of your lot?
We're about 50 feet away from the lot line, I would say.
Oh, to the north? Yeah.
Oh, you mean to the north or to the east?
The neighbor to the north.
Oh, that house is still being built, so I'm not sure.
They're probably 130 feet from the backyard from that house.
And there is not an existing house in place? So if that tree is removed, there are not going to be, there are not existing residents who will be adversely impacted if that tree were removed?
No.
What, what exactly, what exact problem does that tree cause for the house?
Okay. When we excavate the house, first of all, I think that that tree will, because it's so large, when we excavate the house, we're going to have to overexcavate our footings, and I think we're going to be like six feet past, and we're probably going to be in the root system anyways, and ultimately, the tree may die. And then the second thing would be, we'd just like to have more room to adjust the grade at the rear of the home. You know, to adjust the elevation
Mm-hmm.
of the house, that the house will probably be sitting up a little bit higher than the elevation of the tree, and I think ultimately, the tree will die.
Well, it's certainly hard to predict with certainty, but if you're saying that you're willing to make a trade-off of removing the tree to the north and shifting the house to the east to preserve the tree to the west, to me, that seems like a reasonable alternative. That's not on the table, but...
I mean, they're, they're both the same size.
Yeah, if we shift, we may hit 153. And 153, there is a neighbor on that side of that tree, so I would think they probably don't want that tree to come down.
I'm not suggesting taking anything down to the east or the west.
Right, but I'm saying if we shift the whole house to the east...
Yes.
I'm not sure how close we'll be to that specimen tree number 153.
Oh, are you saying if you shift to the east to preserve the tree to the west, you might have to take down the tree to the east?
Or it may be negatively impacted if we get too close to that root system.
Oh.
And they're, the neighbors are, we have neighbors on the east, but not on the west. Lake Shore Drive is to the west of us.
I see.
Commissioner Stoker?
It appears to me, and I don't have an exact measurement, the driveway swing that you've got right now is at least 30 feet.
Yes, yes, it is.
So I don't think the shift, if, if we did go down the route of shifting the house to the east, I don't think you need to go very far, maybe two to four feet, and I think you're going to accomplish saving 218. So if that would, if that, if the motion would get changed, I'd probably support that. However, I can, you know, we have, we have had people that we've made, literally, we would not allow them to remove a tree that was closer than 227. So, you know, I understand the grade thing. You may have to build a retaining wall around it to adjust the grades. So depending on where the motion goes, or if someone changes the motion, or anything...
Well, are you, are you talking about amending it, seeing if you can amendment to take down two out of three, and they choose which two?
I was going along the lines of Leroy, that I would be supportive of letting them
Oh.
take down 227 in lieu of 218 by shifting the house, because I don't think they need to shift the house very far to accommodate that.
So basically, they can take out two, and they take, pick which two?
Right, yeah, I guess.
And then they can do all that thought later of shifting here and doing all that.
Right.
Because if that's a friendly amendment, I could accept that because they're the same-sized tree, and it still has the intention.
Well, I didn't make the motion. Can I make it from the amendment?
You can make, he can try to amend it, though.
They're both white pines?
Yeah.
Yes. I would accept.
I would accept it as a friendly amendment if you want to make it.
Okay, so I would make a motion that the, we allow the homeowner to decide on which two trees they're taking down. If they want to remove 227 and keep 218, that's fine. They can shift the house. I think there's plenty of room to shift the house to the east.
That's fair.
And then they have to compensate.
Just one question here. 222, I mean, that for sure is, has to come out, right?
Is that the one allotted tree?
Yeah, that's the one that was previously...
Yeah, okay. Just making sure.
That one's out.
Like, I think we're forgetting that.
Probably 222 and 218.
Between eight...
Or 227.
227, yes.
But with the friendly amendment, then they have to compensate financially for taking down a tree.
Well, that's part of the...
Yeah, that's part of the approval of replacement or compensation.
Okay, we understand the motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Good luck to you.
Okay.
Item four, Diane Hetzel, specimen tree removal. The applicant is seeking approval to remove three specimen trees from the property at 5718 West Park View.
This is a little bit different of a request for a specimen tree removal. This is on an existing residence, and there's no contemplated construction activity occurring. This is more of an issue of potential damage of the, or existing damage and potential damage to a new patio. There's three white pines, and I did put some pictures in the packet, which are also up on the screen. There's three white pines that, it sounds like were planted by the previous owner of the, the house years ago, relatively close to the house, and you can see from the pictures some of the damage that they're doing to the patio area. The forester did walk out to the site and agrees that they're, you know, fairly close to the house, and with the way the little retaining wall is set up back there, not in the best location, and feels that it would be more beneficial to replace additional trees in the rear of the site and allow removal of these trees. So he does recommend approval of the removal of the three pines. Thank you.
I'll move approval of the forester's recommendation.
Second.
And we have a second.
Okay, can I speak?
I know you...
Sure. Okay. All right. Good evening. I'm here to... I'm here to appeal the recommendation of the city forester that I need to provide thirty-nine inches of replacement trees or pay three thousand nine hundred dollars for urban forest projects in order to remove these three trees. It is clear, as you can see in the pictures, that the roots have caused damage to the patio and would do it again if I repair the patio and they are not removed. The city forester also stated to me that the roots could be doing damage to the foundation. I believe there should be exceptions to the ordinance in the case of existing homeowners working to update their homes when it is clear the specimen trees are causing damage to an existing foundation. This is not the fault of the current homeowner. We did not plant the trees. They were planted by the previous owners before we moved to Mequon in nineteen eighty-three. In this case, as you can see in the pictures, they were planted way close to the house. I should not have to pay to plant trees or pay an exorbitant fee that places an undue hardship on the homeowner, me, trying, with me just trying to keep an older home in a good and safe condition. Thank you.
I agree with the homeowner.
Thank you. That has to go to the common council, Jack?
Well, there's, I guess, two options. One would be a policy decision where there would have to be an ordinance change to allow for such relief in cases like this. Or two, there would be a, a, or a Board of Appeals request for a variance to the fees. I guess the more appropriate path would be to try to work with her alderman on perhaps a text amendment to the code, if that's the path that she feels would be the best avenue. I'm not sure the Board of Appeals option would work. If, if the commission or the council feels that this is an appropriate allowance, then we should make it citywide and not just specific to one property.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak to this?
Yeah, I, I thought we did that once, but it had to go to the council because we're, this is the, this is the code, and we're not going to waive the code.
I've been looking at the, the tree preservation ordinance. And I'd like to read a couple of things into the public record. And I have requested that staff work on some language change to this ordinance for this very reason. At the original purpose and intent, one of four points was made, that it is declared a matter of public policy that preservation of intact remnants of old-growth forest and preservation and a replacement of trees during the land development, building, construction process in the city of Mequon is a public benefit and is desired in the interest of preserving the health, safety, welfare, and prosperity of the people. It goes further at a different point in time in the, in the ordinance where it says applicability. Provisions of this chapter shall not apply to the following. Platted lots, except with regard to removal and protection of specimen trees and/or disturbance of vegetative cover on or adjacent to steep slopes or bluffs or within the one-hundred-year floodplain, as provided in section fifty-eight, six seventy-four. This is a lot, it appears to me that this ordinance was originally written to protect our city undeveloped land from being clear-cut in the development process, that we wanted to preserve old-growth trees in undeveloped areas. I highly suspect that the majority of people in Mequon don't realize that this may apply, or has been applied, to individual plots of land where there's already, there were already houses on them. In this instance, this isn't old-growth trees in a remnant forest. These are trees that were planted by a previous homeowner. To suggest that homeowners cannot cut down the trees they planted, not old-growth, not old-remnant forest, seems far-reaching for, for our city government. So I have requested that the ordinance be adjusted to represent that. And I think in this instance, to ask a, an individual homeowner to pay for planting more trees when what she's trying to do is protect her home from further damage, and these trees have in fact damaged her, her home. The forester even indicated that, that the trees are changing the pitch of the land so that water, instead of flowing away from the home, is flowing toward her foundation. And the roots of the trees are not very far from that foundation. So I, I really think we should find a way to waive this requirement.
I agree.
Is there, Mr. Mayor, is there a way to approve removal of the tree and then defer the penalty for, say, twelve months? Until that matter is sorted out? It's almost two different issues, unless you want to come back when the zoning code, or when the code is changed, correct?
Yeah, I would think you would have to either defer a decision on this until that is acted upon.
Is that okay with the homeowner, or?
It would, wait, you mean, I would have to defer doing any cutting down of the trees until this ordinance is changed? Is that what you're saying?
I would think so, because I don't, I mean, there's not, there may not, it may not get changed, or it may get changed in a way that would still require some compensation, and we don't know what that is.
I, I thought it was a compelling case that Connie raised about existing homes and if people plant their own trees, you know.
Yeah, I, I agree. I understand that. I think we just have to be careful on how we frame the language, because the, the previous owner will be back in three years saying he has an existing home. And, you know, he has issues because, and now those weren't planted by him. But we still have to be careful about how we frame the language that we're protecting those trees versus, you know, it's, that it's a planted lot that'll have an existing home on it. So we have to be careful how we frame the language, and that's something we'll have to look at.
Jack, clarify, so we cannot, like, on the agenda, I'm trying to find all this paperwork. We are just being asked right now to approve the removal of three specimen trees.
Correct.
And the forester has agreed. And, but she needs to get these out soon. Can't we just do that and then she can appeal it? Or, you know, I hate to slow down what she...
Well, again, it doesn't sound like, if it was a variance request...
Because we don't have the power to do anything else.
Right.
It's not before us.
If it was a variance request, she would just have to pay the funds. And then if she's successful on her appeal, then she would get the funds back by the Board of Appeals. But if, if she's going down the path of potentially having Alderman Fouquet work on a text amendment, that's a different issue, because that could, again, take a different, it could require, you know...
It could require six months.
Yeah, it could, it will take time, but then it also could, may or, or may or may not help her to a hundred percent satisfaction with regard to compensation. We don't know what that framework would look like.
So what's before us tonight is to approve or disapprove the removal of three specimen trees, nothing else?
I mean, I guess we could, we could approve it, we could approve it and then, and then just have it stayed until action's taken with regard to the, to the ordinance.
Have what stayed?
What's that?
Have what stayed?
Have the approval basically stayed. Or we can just table the item and wait until that action is taken by, you know, the committee or the council with regard to the trees and then have her come back.
Well, maybe the applicant should make that decision.
If you had to pay the thirty-nine hundred dollars or provide thirty-nine inches of replacement trees, would you not take down the three trees?
I don't know what I would do at that point. I mean, well, I...
Well, it's up to you. We, we can give you permission to take down the trees.
Right.
And you don't have to.
So I can take down the trees at this point, is what you're saying? But then, as far as having to pay the thirty-nine hundred or plant the trees, I'd have to wait until the ordinance is changed?
We'll, we'll defer that condition until we find out if the ordinance can be rewritten to allow for your situation.
Okay, so you just...
So she could correct the, the issue...
The damage to...
Of damage to her property and defer payment until a later point in time? Or when you say plant more trees, can she plant trees in her backyard?
Of course, yes.
Absolutely.
And maybe we could do it where we defer, if she's willing to, if she had the choice between paying or planting, and she chose planting, we could defer that planting till spring. And then at that point, there might be action taken by the council that would make that a moot point.
Okay.
I could agree to that.
Okay, so that's my motion.
Can we set a date for that, though? I, I, this is a compelling case, I agree, but I don't want, it is a slippery slope. You're going to have other people coming forward. And if we don't, if we allow you to defer to some sort of unnamed date in the future, I think other people are going to want to do the same. So can, how long would it take, on average, to go through the whole council process and make a code change? Is six months sufficient? Is eight months?
Three, four months, probably. So if we defer till like...
So we're July?
...May first or something, May, I think May first would be enough time.
Should be plenty of time, shouldn't it? And then, say, at that point, either the code has changed or it hasn't, and then the thirty-nine hundred of the trees...
So it deferred for nine months?
Okay. And I would, sec, can I, does that, I don't even know if you really moved or if I interrupted your motion. But can we include that in the motion?
I'd already made a motion.
It was already mo, you already motioned, I seconded it.
Okay.
You have a motion to remove it, now you're adding either a friendly amendment to defer that.
Make a friendly amendment for the nine months as a set date before.
That's acceptable.
I will accept that as well.
I'm sorry, the, just, you know, what did you...
So I'm saying, you can't just defer endlessly. I think if there's not a decision made in nine, the date, I would think, Jack, throughout the, whatever, how many months that is, let's say, May first, because that's spring.
Okay.
If there's not a decision made at that point, then I think the thirty-nine hundred dollars or the whatever diameter inches of trees would have to be put in place at that point, so that it's not just lingering.
Okay, so I can go ahead and cut down the trees?
Yes.
And then we'll put this off till May first, as far as either plant trees or pay or...
Pay or not pay.
Or not pay.
As you hold, yes.
Not pay would be good.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, Dermond, property investments, a fill permit in excess of a thousand cubic yards. The applicant is seeking fill permit approval for thirty-two forty-five cubic yards for a thirty-three unit multifamily development at one-one-one-three-zero North Punch Rock. Actually, they're not filling the property, they're removing thirty-two hundred forty-five.
Right, the, the excavation is primarily for the underground parking that would be constructed as a part of the apartment building, along with the, the pond that is required for their stormwater from the site. It is thirty-two hundred forty-five cubic yards that would be leaving the site. So we have, we have reviewed their grading plan, and we don't have any concerns with the removal of the fill as part of the construction.
Okay. Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, unless there's further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendations, one through eight, right on number five.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That passes.
You think you're getting away with one, just walking. Not so much discussion on that one.
Number six, building and site plan amendment for exterior building improvements for the property located at one oh five hundred and one oh five twenty, North Park Washington Road. Concord Development Corporation. Jack?
This is a request to modify an existing building. And I have kind of, I think a picture would probably help a lot in this one with regard to the, what building this is. This is a kind of an interesting, it's two separate buildings. They're connected together on two separate parcels with a property line and a party wall running through them. This is on Port Washington Road. The applicant is requesting to modify the building. And there's basically, this is the, the drawing of what the building would look like. As you can see, there's a, a nice glass entryway, tower, and new, larger windows throughout the development. We think the, the improvements to the building are very nice. We're supportive of the design. You can kind of get a picture of a before and after there. And I think it's a tremendous improvement to the, to the building itself. They're not requesting any other changes to the, the building or the site. And staff did a compliance inspection. There's a number of pictures in the, in the report that talk about some of the things we'd like to get taken care of as part of the approval, including patching, ceiling, and striping the parking lot, replacement of all non-compliant and damaged lighting. And then we're asking for some landscaping to be added around the foundation of the building, along the front of the parking lot, and with a strip along the south property line, which I believe I have a picture of there as well. I did speak with the applicant earlier today. I guess the only, they're willing to, to make all the improvements in the report. The one concern they had was with regard to the ceiling of the parking lot. So I'll let them kind of talk a little bit about that. And then I would ask James maybe to help me a little bit with the, the benefits or the pros and cons to not sealing it or sealing the parking lot, or if there's any other options. So with that, I'll leave that up to the applicant. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. We'll go to the applicant. Introduce yourselves first.
Yes, hi, I'm Colleen Jordan from Concord Development Company. And...
Mark Helman, the architect.
Welcome.
With regard to the seal coating of the parking lot, we don't have that within the scope of the project right now. We appreciate the staff's support of the building changes, and we are comfortable with all of the other recommendations. But sealing the parking lot right now isn't within the scope of the project, and it's probably not a recommended procedure due to the current condition of the asphalt. And it, having not been sealed before, I don't know that it's going to have much impact to the appearance and if that impact will be having a lasting impact.
Are you contemplating replacing the existing asphalt?
Not at this point in time, not at, within this portion of the project, but for, perhaps at some future point in, in another phase of improvements.
Is it in bad condition?
It's not in great condition, but it's serviceable for parking needs.
I have a picture of, of one of the sections that I took of the lot. As you can see, there's, there's been some previous patching that was done, and there's some, some weeds growing through that as well. So our concern was, it, it's in fairly rough condition. There's some definite patchwork that needs to be done. And, you know, we felt the seal coat will definitely make it look more presentable, especially with, with a new striping plant on top of it as well. I don't, James, if you want to add in in regard to any other potential solutions to the issue?
Yeah, I guess in full disclosure, I've only seen the pictures, so I haven't actually done a field visit to review the, the pavement condition. But looking at it, it does look like it was seal-coated once before. They've cracked sealed, but it could use more crack sealing. You know, there's, there's not much you can, you can do some preventative maintenance treatments, like we're talking seal coating, crack sealing. Pavement is getting pretty old. It's getting near the end of its useful life. But you, you could seal coat this and crack seal it, and that, that would help, if nothing else aesthetically, just to, to prevent a lot of the streaking that's showing up in the roadway or in the, in the parking lot right now. But those would basically be your options.
Well, we are willing to do some landscape screening in the front. We're willing to do the landscaping towards the south end of the property in that green space island. We are willing to do some patching. We are willing to address the weed issue. We're willing to do the re-striping. But I don't know that the seal coating is really going to be a beneficial improvement in light of the cost of doing that. And that's something that would need to be done periodically for an aesthetic benefit that I don't know is really a functional benefit.
You're going to take care of the light poles?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Schaefer?
This building has been kind of an eyesore for a long time. And I think there's a great improvement to the building. I think that's going to be just great. I, I would hardly agree with the architect. I think you've done a fine job. And I certainly hope that the planning commission approves it. I really don't have an opinion on the seal coating. It would be nice, but I, I don't think it's a killer.
Okay. Commissioner Mason?
Jack, if they hadn't, if the applicant hadn't come forward with the resurfacing of this, would, would we have addressed the parking lot issue? I mean, would we have gone after the previous owner and said, you need to fix your parking lot?
As it being vacant, we would have had to receive the complaint regarding it, and we would have had to go out and verify whether it is, it was an issue. In the past, we haven't really done full enforcement of, of the improvements to parking lots unless there's large holes that have become a safety issue, or if there's weeds growing up through them and things like that. I mean, recently, we just had the old Pick and Save redo their pavement because they were getting, you know, it was getting rather old and tired-looking. So it may not have been right away, but if this would have gone on for a number of years, then yes, I think we would have probably done something. But I couldn't tell you exactly when. It would probably have been based on some complaint or something like this would triggers us to go out there and take a closer look at it.
Okay. And then the other question would be on signage. So I see signage at the top of the building, and I just want to make sure that, that we're clear what signage they can put on here and the numbers of the building. And I don't know if this is going to be multi-tenant, and then we're going to have that discussion... multi-tenant, and then we're gonna have that discussion in a couple of months.
Well, they haven't requested any sign waivers at this point, so at this point, I could just assume that their signage is gonna comply with our current code, and if not, they'll be back in front of you asking for a sign waiver of some sort, if, if they feel that's the plan they wanna go with.
Commissioner Parrish?
Yeah, thank you for bringing forward this proposal. It is, you know, a very prominent site in the middle of a lot of future redevelopment. You know, the alternative is some much larger development here, you know, and I don't think the market's really at that point where this building should come down and some big redevelopment of this area, so I like how you're doing kind of a temporary upgrade to the building to take us through the next decade here until its calling comes. As far as the seal coat goes, I don't think it looks very good, but I think whatever tenant you find will require that of you, and at that point, you'll agree to the deal, just to get the deal. So for that reason, I agree with Jim, and would be supportive.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's probably a rental thing.
Yeah, they'll just, they'll just do it then, so.
Okay. Motion?
I move to approve, as staff has laid out with the number one and number two requirements.
And no requirement for seal coating?
And, yeah, no, no seal coat requirement on the driveway.
Parking lot.
Catching and striking.
We have a second. Commissioner Schaefer?
I'm sorry, I still had a question. Agree with everything that's said, thank you. I think that this will be a great benefit. And I was going to say the same thing as Commissioner Mason about signage, so hopefully you've worked with staff and understand.
Yes.
Cause we do hear a lot of sign waiver requests up here as well. Is the building gonna be white? It's hard to tell in the rendering if this is accurate, or if it's just a?
Existing brick will remain.
Existing what?
Brick. Existing brick.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
That's probably a poor photo.
Yeah, that's a, that's not a good representation of what it actually looks like, but.
It's not a mustard.
No.
I've parked on the less compromised size of that, side of that light by Copymaster, so I know this building, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Good luck to you, thanks a lot. Item number seven, Charter Manufacturing. The applicant is seeking Building Site Plan Amendment approval for exterior building modifications for the property at one-twenty-one twenty-one North Corporate Parkway.
This is another remodel and of existing structure. This is the property that was currently, or has been occupied and is still currently occupied by Denta Quest. This is in our corporate, on Corporate Parkway. Charter Manufacturing has purchased the building and is looking to move some of their operations into the building. The only changes to the site plan they're requesting is the, the extension of the front entranceway as part of the building. As you can see, I can go through some of the pictures for you. Let me get out a little bit. This is the site, this is a very large building, this is Port Washington Road along here, and this is the interior road of the Corporate Parkway. Let me just scroll down a little bit. So here is the proposed elevation. In this case, they are looking to paint the existing brick, this is a light gray. They're also adding a nice entryway atrium to the building and adding some bronze windows. They're also adding a number of brick columns on all four sides of the building to give the building a little more character and some articulation. Staff is again supportive of what they have done to the existing building to make it look a lot more modern, and in keeping what's still, in keeping with the character of what we see in Mequon. Here's the board that kinda shows some of the materials. They're also making some changes to the, the site as well. There's some uplighting that is gonna be added around the columns to provide some accent lighting. We don't have any cut sheets on that, but we'll make that as a condition of approval that they provide us cut sheets. There's also some landscaping that they're showing around, primarily around the foundation of the building, to incorporate some of the new design elements with the, the columns and the overhangs. We did do another staff visit on this one as well. The only issue I saw was the, all the parking lot islands were overgrown with weeds, and there was, whatever was planted there was probably pretty much all dying or gonna be dead soon. So we're just asking that the landscaping plan be updated to include new plantings in all the parking lot islands as a condition of approval. But overall, again, we feel that's a nice improvement to the building and is supportive of the request. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Anything you wanna add?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Tim Neparath with MSI General. Thought the staff did a great job with reviewing the proposal, and we're in full agreement with the recommendations.
Great. Commissioner Parrish?
Yeah, first of all, I just wanted to thank Charter Manufacturing for helping us dodge a bullet with a very large vacant office building in Mequon. It's really great that you guys are growing. MSI did a nice job with the plans. My comment relates more to the, just the existing way the building was built, and Jack, can you stay on the west elevation? Just where the utilities are, with the gas and all that? It's just so visible from the road, so that would just be my only suggestion, is you're incorporating it into your landscaping plan, that it really attracts attention away from the beauty of the building and onto the utilities, and looks like it's the back of the building. And so I don't think any change to staff's recommendations is necessary. I just wanted to point that out, and thank you again.
I think it is the back of the building.
It is the back, but it's, for everyone else, it's the front, you know, so.
Yeah, the landscaping plan does include landscaping in front of that to screen that from the road.
You could've stopped me halfway through.
Motion approved per staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a question. Second to approve. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have a question. I'm familiar with the building and its former use, and it was distinguished by having numerous entrances and exits. Is that still gonna be incorporated, or are some of those gonna be eliminated? I don't, I have no position. This is just the point of information that I'm seeking.
Yes, the building was originally designed for multiple tenants.
That's what I thought.
Now since Charter's gonna be occupying the whole building, that was the main idea, putting the new entrance in the south to clearly identify the main entrance for people to come in there. We still have some access for employees, but they'd be de-emphasized, so everybody knows where the front door is.
I see.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Item number eight, Silver Spray Holdings. That item has been withdrawn. So we move on to item nine, Veridian Homes. The applicant is seeking final plat approval for Phase One seventeen lots for a fifty single-family subdivision, fifty lot, single-family subdivision at one-oh-seven-two-nine through one-oh-eight-three-nine North Walatosa Road.
This is a final plat request for the first phase of the enclave, seventeen lots. The final plat is consistent with the approved preliminary plat. There's only a couple of minor changes that needed to be added to the plat. There was some specimen trees on the site, and we asked there'd be a landscape preservation easement over those areas, and we want those identified on the plat, as well as the exist, the bike paths that were just installed, we had, we asked that that be added to the final plat as well. Other than that, we do recommend approval. I guess there's one question with regard to the open space easement document that we discussed at our last meeting with the Highlander Estates, and whether that needs to be a condition before recording the plat or not. I just wanna bring that up, just in case you guys wanna have a discussion about that. This one is a little bit longer timeframe, cause this won't go to common council till, I believe it's August ninth. So we have some, a little bit more time before this gets finally approved. I have the city attorney working on a document with the Highlander Estates, I haven't received it back yet, so I'm hoping that that will be wrapped up, and the document will be essentially the same as what will happen with this one, with just some changes to identify the subdivision and all the other legal descriptions. So I'm confident we'll get it done by then, but I just wanted to bring that up, just in case there was a question about that. So we do recommend approval according to the conditions of the report. Oh, on a final note, I would just wanna add, just in case, we, there's that historic property out there, we haven't forgot about that, and it sounds like the applicant will be having that demolished and saving the log feature sometime in early August, was the last I heard. So unless that's changed, I?
No, I don't, I don't have an exact date. That's the only thing that I was gonna ask, is that, I mean, we are working on it. When we got the staff report, this is the first time we were told that we had to have that house removed before our plat would be recorded. So the person who is going to be taking down the house is on vacation. They were planning to have the dumpster placed this week to have the exterior siding and the materials that they were not going to be used. They were getting started on it, hopefully sometime this week or early next week, so I don't, I don't know that we have enough time between when we would like to record the plat and, and when, when they actually complete the work to have that done. Had we known, we would've been a little bit more aggressive with this person, trying to get the work done as soon as possible.
Excuse me.
Commissioner Adams?
It, it seems that you're trying to preserve it, though, whoever's coming through. So I would hope we could somehow work with them, and so it is preserved, and, cause he could probably have it down in two days, if, if he wasn't trying to let someone preserve it.
Yeah, I'm not overly concerned. We did have that condition at the time of the preliminary plat that we wanted to address, and that just followed through with regard to this, so maybe they didn't remember it from the previous time, but as long as there's progress, you know, we've, the Landmarks Commission basically said that he had until November of last year to find someone to take it, or he could demolish it, and we've been working since then, still trying to get someone to save it. So I, we, you know, the reason why it's up longer is we're still trying to preserve it as best we can.
And I applaud that, I really do, on everyone's part.
And it is going someplace locally as well.
Oh, good.
So we can defer on that, and we'll just monitor it as any other demolition project, so that's fine.
We will do our best to get it done as soon as we can.
We'll do our best to get all the documents to you. Commissioner Schaefer?
Can we just talk about the open space easement?
Sure.
Again, quickly, so I remember, I need you to refresh me. We approved.
Well, the condition under the Newman Highlander Estates plat was that they could not record the plat prior to that open space document being approved by the city attorney, and they wanted to get the plat recorded prior to that, so they could sell lots and houses. And so we approved it, not requiring that to be done prior to the recording of the plat. So the plat's now been recorded, and it's not their issue right now, it's all in our hands, and it's been taking a little longer than I hoped, but, you know.
So same, same, here.
And they keep asking me, is it done yet as well? So they're, they wanna check this one off their list as well, so.
I'm sure they do. I think I voted no on that because of the open space easement, because I, because of my history with open space easements. But is the language going to be, would this one assumedly be maybe a little quicker? Because it would be very similar language to the Newman Highlander?
Yes, this is, this is kind of a new document for us, and that's why I think the initial one's gonna take longer, because this is about having language in there that basically states that the public can use those pass as, you know, as public pass, and that all the open space has to be maintained in accordance with the approved open space plan. So it's a little bit different than what we've done previously in terms of our conservation of the subdivision and things like that. So, once we get the first one done, then we'll keep that template.
Would be a similar language, no, no deviation, where you have eight different open space easement documents that you then have to resolve at some point, twenty years later? Okay. Okay.
Okay. I'll move approval subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, and it passes. Keep on truckin'. Okay. Item number ten. Beckett LLC for North Shore Bank. The applicant is requesting preliminary plat and development agreement approval for a seventy-seven lot subdivision for the properties located at one-oh-five-six-five and one-oh-six-three-one North Walatosa Road, and staff has recommended that this item be tabled. Correct?
Yes, we're still working out some issues with the applicant with regard to access, so we've both agreed that at this point it would be best to table it, and we'll bring it back hopefully in September for approval of the preliminary plat and development agreement. This is the TDR piece that a number of different developers have had their eyes on over the years, so hopefully we'll bring it back in September, but they were in concurrence.
Do you want to make a motion to table?
Second.
Motion and a second to table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Jack, why is North Shore Bank the applicant for this seventy-seven lot subdivision?
They own the property.
Okay, yeah.
Item eleven, Schaefer Development. The applicant is seeking rezoning recommendation from Town Center IPS C-two to Town Center C-two P-U-D for the properties at sixty-two-hundred, sixty-three-hundred West Mequon Road and one-thirteen, one-thirteen-fifty Buntrack Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, are we doing silver spray?
That was.
That was tabled.
Silver spray was withdrawn.
I believe the applicant is, have, has a presentation prepared for us, so I think we'll listen to that first.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Cindy Schaefer with Schaefer Development, and I'm here tonight with Mark Ernst from Egbert Anderson, and we're here to talk about Mequon Town Center Two. And we're working through the branding and redevelopment of this exciting mixed-use site, but before I get into that, I just wanted to touch a little bit about the Mequon Town Center. As many of you know, I bought the properties adjacent to City Hall over ten years ago, and never in my wildest dreams did I think we would have what we have here today. And, well, I know it's been controversial at times. I think this picture says a thousand words of the kids playing in the pool and the interaction we've had with our community. In the morning, you see people meeting, having business meetings and coffee, and in the afternoons, you see students meeting to do their homework. I've attached a quote here that I received, and I've received many, from a member of the Town Center Committee who said, "Thank you for making my dream come true. We finally have a Mequon Town Center." What we've been doing in the following site is really meeting with constituents and trying to solve a challenging site. These challenges include wetlands, environmental contamination, water, sewer, and electrical easements. What we've been doing is holding focus groups, neighborhood meetings, and doing extensive market research. What we found from our focus group is that people prefer to rent for several reasons. They desire to downsize, they wanna have the flexibility to travel, and they wanna have a low-maintenance lifestyle. As we had our neighborhood meetings, we looked at several different building options on this site, and when I reviewed previous planning commission meetings of other apartment development proposals, one of the concerns was massing in large buildings. So what we tried to do here was separate the buildings. We have four separate residential buildings, as opposed to one or two large buildings. We start with townhouses on Buntrack and move our way forward. A unique part of this proposal is that we are proposing to repurpose the existing public works buildings on the site. And we need the density in the residential to help cover some of the costs to do that, but we feel that saving this unique, these unique historic buildings also offers a unique amenity to potential retail tenants. It's similar to having these old warehouse buildings in the third ward. We can offer some unique space here in Mequon. We've met with several retail tenants. We, we have not signed any leases yet, of course, cause we're not approved, but we have a strong interest from very high-demand, high-level anchor tenants for this site. Here you can see the street frontage. We're looking at repurposing one of the public works buildings to restaurants, a potential public market. We're looking at some collaborative shared workspaces. When we had the neighborhood meetings, one of the things we were told by the neighbors is they wanted a more traditional look. You know, most of our apartments that we've seen so far are flat, rough apartments, more modern-looking, and so the desire was for a more of a traditional look with balconies and brick. The luxury townhomes are located along Buntrack, and as you can see by the sightline of this picture, we start with the townhomes, and then we move to the east with higher-level buildings and three-story buildings, but because of the grade of the land, the sightline works through that. I know that one of the other concerns at previous council meetings was I know that one of the other concerns at previous council meetings was, is there a market for apartments? You know, what is the market for multifamily apartments? Our research shows an absorption rate of about 11 units per month. Um, we, we look at a couple of things in the market research. One of them is the number of new housing permits that are applied for yearly. And that has risen, it dropped down to about 200, maybe a little below, and it's rising back up to 450. And a certain percentage of those will be apartments, around 30%. So, we're looking at 150 apartments a year. So, our average size will be around, um, 1,000 square feet. And we're looking at a benchmark price of a dollar 67, a dollar 68 a square foot. So, a chunk price of around $1,500 is what we're looking at. The other thing that's unique about the market in Ozaki County in particular is we have a significant number of two-person and single-person households. It, the range is 60%, which is extremely high. So, what we're seeing is that people want to leave their homes because of the maintenance costs. A lot of people do not want to go into senior housing. They're active and vibrant and they want that community lifestyle where they can ride their bikes and, and not be locked into senior housing. The research shows that people want unique and different outdoor spaces. Bike path, the bike path is a huge amenity for this development. The patant court at Cafe Hollander's been getting lots of use and we're looking at doing maybe something similar, a lawn bowling or bocce ball. What people really want are community spaces and gathering spaces. Those are even more important than amenities such as pools or even workout rooms to some, workout rooms to some degree. So, people want to be able to sit around a fireplace and connect with one another, to have a space with a kitchen where they can cook meals together. And going a step above that is also activities for your residents. I've toured a lot of the major developments downtown and it was interesting, one that I went to was, um, the Avenir Downtown. And as I toured it, there was a group of tenants sitting in the lobby playing a game. And they said, "Hey, you guys, come back. You want to live here. This is a great place to live." So, that's what people are looking for, is activities, book clubs, yoga classes, communal This is the kitchen at the Mequon Town Center next door. The apartments here will have the same high-end finishes in all the units, stainless, solid surface, in-unit washer and dryer. One of the things we're going to do is add a little bit more, um, storage that, something we didn't have a lot of at the Town Center because of the size of our units. And we're also going to offer a pet washing station and storage for bicycles. The total estimated value of the project is $29 million. Over $400,000 a year in tax increment is what we're projecting, which will generate $4 million over the next 10 years. That doesn't take into account the impact of job creation and the economic benefit to our community. Our goal is to honor our community while complementing its surroundings. There we go. Word's a little slow. There we go. That was it. So, with that, I guess I'll ask Jack to give his presentation. You want your?
Get the site plan up before we start. So, this request, um, by the applicant is for rezoning and a PUD overlay. As many of you recall from our, uh, previous approvals in the Town Center, anything over 16 units triggers the, uh, the PUD. This project was awarded, uh, Schaefer Development was awarded on February 9th by the council to enter into a contract, um, with certain, uh, development achievements that were required. They have to generate $26.6 million in increment. This proposal is looking at between 29 and 34 million. Uh, as the applicant has stated, the proposal includes 19,600 square feet of retail space, 165 residential apartments, 186 blogerite stalls, 378 surface parking stalls, uh, a density of 12 units an acre, um, or 15 units a acre, depending on the, uh, the T, uh, to be determined building, which I'll get to in a little bit. As, uh, the applicant stated, there are some site conditions on this property, there are some specimen trees and there's some wetlands on this property. The specimen trees are, uh, primarily located just along Buntrack Avenue. There's a number of cedars there. The applicant is intent on saving those trees. There's a wetland that is, uh, smack dab in the center of the site. It's an isolated wetland that doesn't connect to anything. The applicant did receive approval from the DNR to fill that wetland. And there's also a large wetland complex along the north of the site that will be left, uh, as is, and it's adjacent to the, uh, the stormwater pond proposed for the site. Uh, the applicant did state that there was a neighborhood meeting held on June 15th. Staff was also at that meeting. A number of neighbors in the area were also at that meeting. Uh, some of the, the key issues that were brought up with, by the neighbors was, uh, the concern about traffic on Buntrack. They felt that a signalized intersection at industrial may help alleviate some of that traffic. Um, they were also concerned about maintaining that tree line as, as best as possible along Buntrack Avenue. Again, as the applicant stated, the concept plan shows four residential buildings labeled A, B, C, D. These are the townhomes. Uh, there are 10 townhomes shown on the plan. Uh, this is an apartment building of three stories, Building C, and this is apartment building of three stories as well for A and B that, uh, have a somewhat of a U shape there. Uh, the, I didn't, uh, it's in the packet, I didn't bring it up, but there are a, a significant number of encumbrances on this property with regard to easements and existing utilities that made it really difficult to plan the site. And we've been working on this for good four or five months, trying to come up with a, an optimal, optimal solution. And I think we're getting, getting closer, but there's a significant number of utilities that run this way. There's a su, large sewer line that runs this way, so we kind of had to keep playing with those, uh, utilities to try to figure out where to locate all the buildings. In terms of the commercial, as the applicant stated, she's going to be using some of the existing buildings on site. This is the old former Ross Wells Building that is larger in its current condition, but a number of the, a portion of the building will be removed. Some of it's in disrepair at this point. There's also contemplated a little bit of an addition off the front of that building along Mequon Road. This is our sewer maintenance building, which I refer to as the large, uh, public works building. Uh, that, that is, uh, as the applicant stated, hopefully converted into some sort of public market or some other type of retail use. And then our small sewer maintenance building that is located, um, uh, adjacent to the fire and police building. Uh, the plan also shows, it's hard to see on here, but there's actually a stairway cut into that retaining wall along Mequon Road that would allow access to the site, uh, at the top end of the hill, which we thought was, uh, pretty ingenious and, uh, hopefully DOT will be acceptable to, uh, having that modification. The staff report is, is probably one of the longest ones we've done. There's a lot of detail in there and a, a lot of that was intentional because we didn't want to have any misunderstandings going forward, like, uh, with the other development, uh, the Town Center where we were kind of waited till the last minute to try to figure out some of these things that were kind of in flux. So, I want to kind of go over some of the, the details to the plan. This is, again, just PUD and concept plan, so they will be coming back for building and site plan, but we wanted to make sure that, um, all these items that we discussed will be present and available once the building and site plan returns. So, um, I guess I'll talk a little bit about, um, the, the build, the residential buildings. As I stated, they're, uh, three-story, they're approximately 50 feet in height. Our code allows up to 50, two feet in height, as long as there's that increased setback of 10 feet, which they do comply with. Again, she showed the picture of the sloping grades that the townhomes from Buntrack towards the east will show that the, the height differential will not be that significant, uh, with those buildings when you look at it from Buntrack Avenue. The plan also shows an office and a clubhouse in this location on the, uh, of the site with also some other outdoor amenities, which I'll talk about in a little bit. Um, again, the southern side shows the, the existing uses of the, uh, existing city buildings and the Ross Wells Buildings. Uh, there is a building labeled to be determined right in here and we've had some discussion on that. That was originally, if, uh, some of you were present at the, uh, the meetings at the council, that, that was originally talked about potentially a hotel in that location. Uh, it also has a potential use as a commercial building and the applicant also was requesting that, I mean, potentially another residential building of additional 30 units on that, on that building. Uh, the applicant is feeling that this whole development will be done in one phase with exception of the TBD building and that will come within two years after the completion of the first phase. We feel that the, the concept plan does a nice job in kind of meeting some of the goals of the Town Center. Um, we did have some critique and some recommendations as we move forward, what we, we hope to expect to see as this process evolves. The area where it shows the splash pad and the, the little, uh, office building and there's also bike racks along this area, we feel this is a, a rather crucial area and it's really important to the, the residential units, um, to make sure that that's a, a, a functional, active space that has value. As some of you may recall, the Bobbok proposal up on Mequon Road, they built, or they're in the process of building an indoor pool with a rooftop deck with a patio. We feel that's a really vibrant and active space. With the number of units here being, you know, roughly 165, we feel this space maybe should be a little bit more important in terms of what types of features are there. So, hopefully as we move forward, we can work with the applicant on trying to keep that space, uh, very active and, and, uh, make sure there's amenities that will, um, serve the exit, the tenants in the residential buildings. Uh, we also have, you know, our civic campus right across the street. There's been discussion on the ultimate use of the Logoman property. Uh, staff has been working with the railroad at this time to get a, a pedestrian crossing in this portion of the site. It seems like that's a, it's fairly, uh, fairly simple process than, simpler than we thought it was going to be. So, we're in the process of kind of working through those, uh, going through those motions. But we feel that perhaps the, uh, the use of, you know, bike racks and, and other bike pedestrian-friendly, um, amenities should maybe on, be on the public side of the, of the railroad tracks versus the private side. So, you know, as the discussion over Logoman flushes out, maybe we'll have a better understanding on how that, all that dynamic will play out. So, you know, some of that can kind of evolve as we go through that process. So, we're hoping, uh, hopefully learn over the next few months on what that Logoman property will ultimately be used for and that will help us get a, a better decision on, you know, what happens up in this little, little pocket right here. There are some minor issues that we still think are important to address at this stage. I'm just going to zoom in a little bit, maybe we can get a better, uh, view. Staff has a little bit of concern about how this operates in terms of the parking, long-term and short-term. Um, in the short-term, the applicant shows us as a green space area. Uh, this is a, a dead end with really no, uh, ability to turn around. Uh, long-term, they're kind of showing it here as a residential building. This is a, a underground parking access, but for, uh, the vehicles going to some of the commercial sites, that still makes a difficult, uh, navigation issue. You'd have to back out all these stalls instead of, there's no, there's no turnaround and it pinches because of the railroad up in here. So, we need to further kind of look at this site as we evolve the site plan. In terms of parking, uh, even when we take into consideration the to be determined building, this site is well overparked in accordance with our regulations. And I know we've had concerns over parking at the Mequon Town Center here, but, uh, we don't want to overpark this site. I don't think this is going to solve the problems with parking over here. Um, we're looking at, uh, potential between eight and 11 cars per thousand out there, which is, uh, our code requires about five per thousand. So, we're, we're well overparked even with, uh, that TBD building being, uh, built. So, some of the things we'll have to look at is what, you know, do we look at more, adding more active space? Is there a potential for maybe another building on site? Or does the city maybe retain some of that parking lot, uh, for, uh, public, uh, for our safety building in case of times where high demand, like with voter turnout and things like that? So, those, those are things we have to kind of look at as we go forward and, and further evolve the plan. Uh, another issue is, which you can see on the plan, is Building A right here is relatively tight to the railroad tracks. We're just a little concerned on what that, um, visual impact will be for those first-floor units there that are directly adjacent to a 100-foot railroad right away that, uh, doesn't get maintained very often. So, we got to make sure we have enough space that is owned by the developer to actually create some sort of, uh, amenities or some features here to, to screen that, uh, building from the railroad right away. Um, I guess our, our final issue with regard to the site plan is that we feel that a traffic, uh, impact analysis should be done on the site to determine whether first of signals are warranted off of industrial or if any other changes should be required with regard to the access from Buntrack and Mequon Road. In terms of the building, I'll kind of go through the building plan, um, one building at a time if I can. Let's get down here, scroll. So, this is kind of a view of the townhouses off of Buntrack. The applicant shows that the materials on the building are a, a brick with a lap siding. Uh, we feel overall that's a, a nice, nice-looking design, nice building. Uh, in terms of meeting our code though, the requirement is that 80% of the building has to be of primary materials, which is brick and stone. Uh, based on the, uh, percentages given by the applicant, the, the townhouses are only roughly about 25%. So, we feel there's some improvements that can be made with regard, um, and I kind of get to them a little bit later, but, um, we feel like the, the gable end should, uh, have a brick or stone feature. The chimney should be masonry with a cap on versus the, uh, the siding. So, there are, there are things we can work on with regard to that building to add a little bit more brick to the building. Uh, maybe not get to the 80%. We have allowed waivers to that 80% for the Mequon Town Center project, uh, on the corner as well as the, uh, P2 development. Getting to that 80%, it's one of the things we're going to actually look at in terms of maybe we should revisit. It kind of gets a real heavy feel if there's 80% brick or stone, so I think we need a maybe a little bit better balance. 55, 60%, I think may, maybe a better ratio to hit in terms of, uh, that brick to siding ratio. So, um, we're kind of looking at that as a policy issue, but I think as far as this development goes, we're, we're still pushing for additional brick, but maybe not get to that 80%. They do meet the requirement to have the 15 to 50% windows along a public street, so that, they're in compliance with off of Buntrack, so we're, we're supportive of that. Uh, again, the mult, the three multifamily buildings, they have somewhat of a similar design, um, just a little bit different, uh, color variations. I'll kind of go through some of the slides. These are also a bit short in terms of the, uh, the brick and stone requirements. Um, I'm just going to get through. So, this is the Building A, this is the north elevation, east elevation, elevation of Building A. This is the one closest to the railroad tracks. The brick accounts for roughly 45% of these buildings versus, uh, 55% siding. So, you know, again, we'll kind of work with the applicant to kind of, to play with that ratio a little bit to get a little bit more brick on the building. Uh, later on, I do have some other specific criteria that we can talk about with regard to the, uh, improvements to those buildings as well. Uh, the Ross Wells Building, they did provide a, a rendering of what the front of that could look like. Now, at this point, this is somewhat still concept in nature because we don't have tenants laid out, um, but they did provide us what could look here in this, in terms of this building. You know, we're happy with some of the, some of the features that they're identifying, but we still are going to have to nail down what exactly that building's going to look like in the future. But we do want, uh, that principal entrance on Mequon Road to be functional and operable. Um, that was an issue with our building on the corner here. And we also want to make sure that that front facade be, contain at least 60 to 90% windows, which is also a requirement in the Town Center, in the Town Center. As well as, uh, the, um, the large public works building, this is also, again, somewhat speculative. They don't have the tenants laid out for this building as well, but we feel there are also things that, you know, regardless of the tenant, improvements that we will require as, as far as the final building in sight or building approval plan. Again, we feel that additional windows should be added. All the service elements shall be removed, all the service doors shall be replaced with windows. There's a lot of glass block windows on the building that we want to see replaced with, uh, clear windows. And, and this building, I think it's rather crucial to make sure that all four sides of the, uh, building are treated with the same intent because they have public visibility on all four sides, which, you know, will be somewhat of a challenge depending on the user, but we want to make sure that we're looking at that ahead versus at the end and coming back and asking for forgiveness if they can't make it work. So, uh, this building would also be nice if we could incorporate some sort of awnings or other features. It is setback off the road and it's beyond, uh, compliance with our setback, uh, which I'll talk about a little bit better. So, whatever we can do in the front of that building to provide some elements would be, would be beneficial. Uh, again, the small public works building, this is, uh, basically, uh, adjacent to the public works building. There's a, a large retaining wall that makes up the back of this building. So, the only two facades here that are really visible to the public are the south and the east. And again, I think the plan does a nice job showing large, openable windows. Here you can see the, uh, the sidewalk that comes down the, uh, from Mequon- Here you can see the, the sidewalk that comes down the, from Mequon Road. So we feel that this is a, a nice rendering. We want to make sure that this gets incorporated into the final plan, adding a lot more, you know, having the fenestration, the other architectural details that will make this building really stand out. So overall, those are our critiques of the building and there's some specifics I can go through. There's about 10 points in the bill, in the report that talk about specific architectural elements and I can kind of just run those through and we can kind of talk about them one by one or however, however we want to do that as we go forward. We feel that the gable ends of the townhouses, as I said before, and chimneys shall be clad with masonry with a, a cap treatment. The, the front facade of those townhouses, we'd like to see a little bit more articulation. It's, it's a rather flat front and we feel those gables could project out a little bit more. We don't want to interfere with the specimen trees, so we gotta make sure that works, but we feel that it'd be nice to have a little bit more articulation in the front of that building. The townhouses show a fencing treatment along the interior road. We want to limit that to four and a half feet in height with landscaping to, to screen that from the public view. The east building of building A and the west building of building B and C, we feel that we should have the, the number of gables should be reduced. I can kind of just show you what, what that looks like. It's, there's a significant number of gables in a row. It kind of makes the building a little bit more, seems busy. Here's one of the examples. So we feel like maybe we should have some improvements made to this so there isn't so many gables in a, you know, in a linear fashion there. Again, we feel that there should be more brick versus the, more in that 50 to 60% ratio. We also feel that these buildings should have a little bit more articulation and the entrance ways to the building shall be emphasized more with architectural features. Again, all the commercial buildings, we want to make sure they're in compliance with all the design and fenestration requirements of the town center, district. And then I just, in the report, we talk a little bit about all the design standards of the town center and where they don't comply or bolded out. The first one is the apartments being less than 1,000 square feet. As you may recall from some of the other developments, we require a minimum 1,000 square foot for an apartment. We did waive that requirement for all three of the other apartment developments. We allowed 30% of those units to be under 1,000 square feet. In this case, we added the same condition at the request of the applicant, but no less than 800 square foot apartments. The other developments were all at 30% and their minimums varied from 750, I think one was at 851 and one was at 881. So these are kind of right in the ballpark. I bolded the conditions regarding the maximum height just as a, as an identifier that anything over the two and a half stories will require a conditional use grant. So the applicant will have to come back as part of the building and site plan for a conditional use grant for the three-story buildings. There'll, a sightline study will have to be done to take into consideration the shadowing and public impacts to the neighboring properties and to the public spaces. The front yard setback is not being met. We require again that within 70, 70% of the building has to be within 10 feet of the frontage road of Mequon Road. In this case, since we're reusing the, the two public works facilities that can't be met, those buildings are sitting back 40 feet from the road at minimum and then the other one is at 80 feet. So we're just asking that that whole front facade be looked at so there are a number of active features in there so that, that is not a void from, from Mequon Road. We want to look at landscaping elements, hardscaping, pedestrian friendly again. So we'll keep continuing to work with them on, on those buildings as, as tenants evolve. One condition we did put in there, if, if the large public works building or the Ross Walls building does not ultimately be, ultimately be used, if it's just infeasible from a cost perspective, we want to have an amendment done to the PUD to require them to come back. And at that point, whatever new buildings are proposed, we'll have to comply with that 70 cent, 70% requirement. Other than that, there are a number of other little site planning things we want to see in terms of the internal road being treated with landscaping consistent with the public roads. We want to see our light fixtures that we use in the town center, streets gaping elements, crosswalks at regular intervals. Again, pedestrian connections from Mequon Road into the site. And then we want to address, see that some address, the transition from the railroad right away to this site be addressed with some sort of uniform features. And then any of those stalls that they showed on the, the front along Mequon Road between the public works building be eliminated so there is no parking in that area. So there's a lot of information, a lot of stuff, and I'm sure we can kind of go through it all and discuss whatever you want to discuss going forward. But that's, that's basically the report. We do recommend approval according to the conditions of the report. Thank you.
Twenty-nine conditions with sub, subconditions.
Yes.
You, you did a very thorough job.
I think it was the longest report we ever done, so.
Congratulations. And we're not here to pick it specifically apart, we're here just to make general comments, right?
Yes.
Because we're really not there yet.
Yeah, a lot of this, I think, was just to put them on notice that we're gonna be looking for these improvements and details in the future.
So let me go to the applicant and after hearing that and reading that, do you have any reaction?
No, I mean, I appreciate it, but I'm gonna let Mark talk a little bit about the architecture.
Well, I, I think it was a very thorough report and I appreciate it. We've worked a, a lot with the staff to get the plan to where it is today because they had a lot of challenges in regards to everything Jack talked about, easements and wetlands and, and various pipes that ran through. It really is, was a messy site. So I think we worked around a lot of that and that drove a lot. A lot of the issues are relative to compliance, I think, are relative to saving the buildings. One thing about what that does is it makes all the buildings foresighted buildings. Our intent on the existing buildings is basically open back up the openings that are existing in the buildings that were closed up by primarily glass block. So that's kind of our intent, is to kind of reuse those and add features that I think enhance the kind of industrial history of this there. The only thing that I think we will probably talk more about is the, the amount of brick. I think everything else was pretty understood. I, I think Jack mentioned that adding more brick makes the buildings more heavy, perhaps more institutional. And I think in some respects, we're trying to distinguish this project a little bit from the heritage, the previous, the town center project in terms of heading more towards a residential aesthetic on the, traditional aesthetic on the, the new residential building. So we're distinguishing ourselves, I think, from the town center and then the adaptive reuse of the existing building. So those are the, that's the only thing I think that was maybe something to discuss more is the amount of masonry on the buildings. But everything else, I think, was clearly stated and kind of understood and it's, it's a work in progress because we're, we're really at concept design. Even some of the renderings we showed, like this one, were ones we created in the RFP stage. So some things we've revisited and developed primarily residential. Some things are exactly what we had when we proposed the project originally. So it's, until we start talking to real tenants, in some respects, some of the detailing will evolve when we have those conversations.
I'm glad they've gone into this much detail. We've been meeting weekly.
Right.
And really going through everything and trying to be very thorough and really plan ahead for things like parking and snow and deliveries. And, you know, I, we're arguing about parking because I'm like, we can always add a building, but we can't take one away. And I'm sensitive to that right now, so, but, but it's been a good give and take and, and we appreciate the thoroughness and the time that's been put into this.
Mr. Besler.
I have a question and a comment. All the parking spaces I see, the surface parking spaces, are these for guests or people at commercial places as opposed to the apartment residents will all have underground parking?
The, the residential has, I think, roughly at least one per unit under the buildings. So that's, and then some of the surface parking you see kind of north of the road is surface parking for, to get to the 1.5. Jack probably knows better than I do exactly where we are with the parking ratio, but all the parking south of that road, that dividing road, I guess, between the residential and the retail is parking related to the retail, supporting that. And Jack said, I think, we're at maybe 11 per thousand square feet with the plan as it exists today.
So, so the residents will have indoor parking?
Correct.
Okay. My comment is about the matter of masonry. I understand that, or I get the impression you'd prefer to have less masonry rather than more masonry, but I have to tell you, my personal experience in all the residences I've lived in is it's been the non-masonry features of my housing which have been the parts of my housing that have required periodic, periodic maintenance. To me, an all-brick structure has a simple coherent design and has, and minimizes the overtime maintenance requirements. So I would, my vote would be for all brick rather than less masonry.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Well, I, I think I would differ with Commissioner Besler. I, I wouldn't want to see an entire brick, a brick building or any type of masonry. I think it's, while it may not be too heavy, I like a variety of materials and then it kind of breaks up the structure. I would like to see, I think if, the main material, the heaviest material should be more than 50%. I like to see 50, 55. Doesn't have to be 70, but just a little more. My only other comments on the materials, I'd like to see those chimneys in masonry, at least a thin, thin layer.
Use the microphone.
Building A, what have I got here? I'd like to see a little more brick on A, perhaps 10%. I think the gables on A are fine. On B, there may be a few too many on B, but the east is much better than the west elevation. As far as building C goes, I think there's too many gables on both east and west and it just looks too busy. It has a kind of a staccato effect. Also, Jack had mentioned bringing masonry all the way up to the top of the gables. I would like to see that. I think that looks, that's very elegant. Other than that, I think they're great designs.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Parrish?
Sure. I have several notes. I was obviously nervous when I saw the, the size of this portion of the agenda and then quickly became relieved when I realized I really liked the design and was kind of excited about what I was seeing. I was also couldn't believe the level of detail on the staff report such that I, you know, I was pretty much in agreement with, with most of that, so it allowed me to focus my comments on some other things. First of all, as it relates to, you were asking in the staff report, how might you use, you know, like the excess green space near the rail crossing and just playground, volleyball, some other public purpose? I like that idea. I like that it's near the, near the, the train track where you're trying to get a rail crossing. So I couldn't believe you said it would be relatively easy because I've never heard anyone call working with rail lines easy, so.
Well, we haven't gathered it yet. We've been told it's easy, so we'll, we're open.
So I mean, be cautiously optimistic, but that could be a really good solution for overflow parking, for people using the softball fields. And I'd say that's one of the most important things of this whole development, so that we can get people across the bridge, so to speak. As it relates to the optional building in phase two, I like the idea of not rushing this particular building just because it is an unknown and we can really let the market decide what that will be at some point. You've already met the $26.6 million threshold without that building, so to rush into that particular building, I, I don't see the need nor, you know, necessarily forcing it by a certain date. In fact, as it relates to that building, I was kind of hoping there wouldn't be apartments, to be honest. I think we probably have enough apartments in the town center area. And what might be interesting is, you know, for dental, for example, would have been a perfect tenant over here. You know, some of the medical office or physical therapy, the first level of commercial space that could be more for all of the residents. And then the second level, I think there probably will be a need for more commercial office over time, you know, for people who are living there and wanting to work there and live work, all that kind of fun stuff. So I wouldn't, you know, shoot down the office use either, even though it's not the best use. And along those lines, it kills the pool though, if you do that. And I think the pool is a really good selling point for you, so then I wonder maybe you should be, if you like that idea, maybe you should be incorporating that pool into the top of one of your other buildings over here in the back. So that was just some of the, the thought processes I was going through there. I really like Commissioner Schaefer's comments about really the, the gables and the peaks and, and all that. Definitely 50 to 60% brick or stone. I was pleased to see that you included the market study data. It's, it's helpful for us to see as we're trying to understand the need for the apartments this many. And I guess I was a little concerned about the $4,000 a month rent. I think those must have been the three bedrooms.
That would be the high end in the townhouse units. We have some rather large town home units with fireplaces, three bedroom.
And there's a market for that?
Yeah, we're getting, in some of the, the units at the town center, we're getting $4,000 a month for three bedroom units in, in there now.
Okay. Thank you. I guess my last two points were just, I was looking at the way you were valuing it, valuing it, and I said this for Durman Investments when they got their apartment project approved. And the value is based on a, a cap rate off, off the income and it's a very low cap rate right now at, at six and a half percent and it's just very sensitive to interest rates. So while it makes sense right now, a whole lot of sense, just if interest rates go up and the cap rates go up, I mean, that's almost a million dollars of value fluctuation. So just may want to look into those a little more. And then my final point, thank you for listening to all this, was that we've had quite a few issues with tenants coming back for the first town center one. And I think would be a really good idea would, some sort of like rules and regulations or making sure all the leases have what's required. And I know that Kim on the next agenda item is gonna be discussing a lot of this. So that was gonna be my suggestion for that, is just put the rules and regs on all your tenant leases and that way they're not gonna throw you under the bus saying you didn't tell them that.
I agree, absolutely.
And they won't be coming back here. So thank you so much for this proposal.
Oh, well, thanks for your comments. I value your opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Parrish. I agree with everything you said. Just a couple of general comments from my perspective. You know, I like the architecture. I think it could, as I said, it could be tweaked a bit, but I, I kind of like the look of the architecture. The comment about more substantial private amenities, you know, I'm not sure a splash pad fits the clientele that's gonna be living there. Maybe it does, but something more substantial than that. And, and you have a clubhouse and I'm not sure what's in the clubhouse, but I think those amenities are important as well. So something more substantial, I would really like to see that. And I don't like the name. No sequels, please.
We're actually hiring a branding expert to help us. Yeah, we want to get it right this time.
Anyone?
I have only one. I have one last comment. I understand the difference of opinion about the, the amount of masonry and I defer to Architect Schaefer's opinion, but one point that Jack made was, which I, I firmly believe in is, I think the chimney should be masonry, not siding. Siding chimneys always look peculiar and inappropriate to me.
Mr. Mason.
Staff, thank you for the, the detail on this. This is great. I know we went through a lot of trial and tribulations and rewind with the, the first phase. So I know you're looking ahead, you're thinking ahead, you're anticipating and you're laying it all out and making it very crystal clear at what needs to be done, so thank you for doing that.
We do apologize the, the Friday afternoon packet, but that's the reason, so.
And then also thank you to the applicant. I, I know this is a significant investment. You're taking risk. You're putting your money on the line to build this, but we appreciate that and it's just really going to make the, the Mequon area wonderful and attract people and that's what we want.
Thank you.
Sure.
Jack, this is gonna come to council then, right?
Yes, in fact, at the August council meeting, there's gonna be a, a committee of the whole discussion on just architecture and then it'll come back in September. of the whole discussion on just architecture, and then it'll come back in September for the rezoning approval and, and the development agreement approval.
Because council is more or less, because we were so involved with picking, as, as we all were, kind of adopted this project because it was presented with so many goals of the town center, and I know, I look forward to hearing what council will also have to say with a presentation like this. And as to the, as to the, the buildings, like, for example, Building B, I look at the south elevation, I see, I think, different colors of brick, and then the west elevations, you know, much more boring, but I'm glad that you are looking at mixing some things sometimes. Like, I find, I, I said this before, I think one of the coolest buildings is when I drive, when I walked down the road to Thiensville Park, someone put in, you know, double level townhouses, and they just look so homey to me, so I don't know if you want to, I, I have a feeling we'll be tweaking. You might want to look at that a little bit for inspiration of some materials. I mean.
I'm sorry, I missed the precedent that you. Elm Street condos?
Is that Elm Street condos? As you go to Thiensville, they just have such a homey feeling, and I, I've never heard anyone say anything bad about that, and I, I just visualize it, but I think they mix different types of stones, and, you know, me, I'm a fieldstone girl, but you just don't see that much around Mequon, and I'm not saying you need to do that, but there's so many unique things to use there. But I, I look forward to hearing what council has to say, and then I'll add more of my opinions. Thank you. But good job.
Thank you.
I would echo Commissioner Mason's, really everyone's statements about the partnership and, and the, and the detail that was provided. Thank you, and thank you for being amenable and for the investment. I have three, three quick things. Delighted at Industrial Drive. Can we predict how the DOT will react to that?
Well, it's connecting highway, but it's connecting highway, so we do have some jurisdiction, and we're always a little bit confused on where that, where ours ends and theirs begins, but from our preliminary discussions, again with DOT, it seems like we have more authority on determining that than we thought, so.
That's a pleasant surprise.
Yeah, that yet remains to be seen, but that's what we've been told preliminarily.
I do think that will help alleviate, if it can be done, I think that would help alleviate some of the traffic flow there, because it already gets a little congested at certain times of day. I agree, I think, with Commissioner Parrish about the, the bridge over the railway. I know the intent is to keep that traffic flow along Mequon Road, but I can say, at least from my limited peer group, so moms with young kids, there's a lot of concern about walking along Mequon Road and just in bringing your, you know, smaller children with you because of the speed that cars go by. So I think I can see that being a huge benefit and people reacting positively to that because it provides an alternative avenue for getting across, and then you also are close to, close to the park and the library, and I, I think it's, it's a nice connector and a good alternative for, for that type of audience that might not otherwise feel as comfortable walking along the intended, the intended sidewalk along Mequon Road. And then the, the unknown building, at what point, so when we talk about this or when council talks about this, at what point does it have to be determined? Like, when you're laying out the PUD, are there a list of options that it can be used for?
Well, in the PUD, I did add that the additional potential 30 units could be in there. If it's not residential, it, well, it doesn't have to, that won't, it won't require a PUD amendment because the concept plan shows the building. As long as the uses are permitted in the town center zone, we have flexibility there. Now, if they came back with something that wasn't permitted in the town center, then we'd have to go through that PUD amendment process.
So if it was kind of what Commissioner Parrish said, if it's retail, if it's office, I have, I have a visceral reaction every time I see more apartments coming forward, and that's not for lack of, that's a gut reaction. That's not, you know, you and other applicants have provided written proof and data, and yet I still continue to have this reaction about the overall demand and especially at some of the price points. So I would agree to kind of wait and see on that one, which I think is kind of the, the intent that you're going with anyway, so. But overall, I think this, I think this looks great. I look forward to seeing what council has to say as well.
Yeah, we kind of struggled a little bit with that, to be determined building in a sense, in, in a couple of different ways. Number one, what the use would be, but also the location. I mean, at one point, we had the building kind of up in here, creating a little bit more of a bookend and a little entryway, but the problem is it makes ingress and egress for that restaurant very difficult. We didn't want to have an access point through here because of the stacking on the Mequon Road, and if you only allow it through here, there was really no place to turn around with the building here. So we, we keep playing with that, and maybe we'll come back and figure something out that may work there, but we've been struggling with both location and use of that building, so hopefully maybe we can get something else that will solve both of those problems.
Set up for a bowling alley.
And ju, and just to give you a little history, Commissioner Schaefer, when we presented the RFP, we presented a boutique hotel at that location, but we were asked by the Economic Development Board to give an alternative scenario to the hotel as a residential use. So that was what the EBD asked us to do. So that's, and then just given the parking, I decided to wait in the market to kind of wait and see where we are. But I do like the option of looking at some other alternatives such as office if it works.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Here to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I move approval of the rezoning subject to staff comments.
Second. Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
For Concept Two?
Res zoning and concept one.
Oh, yes, thank you. I didn't have the agenda right there. Yes, and rezoning and concept.
Concept plan approval. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. I really appreciate this opportunity.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Number 12. Text amendment to Chapter 58 of the zoning code. The city is seeking a text amendment for the town center and arrival corridor zoning districts related to the code sections of building and parking placement and building composition.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Jack's going to pull up just some imagery I have that might be helpful as we talk about this policy item, but we're here to, I guess, get some initial reaction to a policy directive related to the town center and the arrival corridor zoning districts. So just as a reminder, the town center neighborhood is generally from the Milwaukee River out to Wawatosa Road. It's about a total of 100 acres. We've seen, obviously, some great redevelopment happening, and we've got a number of projects that continue to be discussed at a concept level with staff. The town center neighborhood is broken into two zoning districts. One is town center zoning, one is arrival corridor. It all, they all have the same standards in terms of placement of buildings, parking to the rear and to the side, a, a push or a motivation for mixed-use development in a more pedestrian-oriented environment while still accommodating the vehicle. The town center zoning district, which is generally from about Buntruck to the Milwaukee River, is intended to be a little bit more compact, a little bit more dense. We recognized based on existing site conditions and, and the road layout, we've got a better opportunity to be successful in that pedestrian-oriented environment within those couple blocks. Because of the mixed-use development nature and the pedestrian orientation, there were specific development standards in the zoning district regarding how the buildings and the activity within the buildings need to relate to the public realm. And that's everything from mandating a setback no greater, you know, than 10 feet from the, the public right-of-way unless there were necessities for that. The requirement that every ground-level storefront have a principal entrance facing the public street, that it be operable, that there be standards for the amount of windows on the first floor, and clear visibility in and out of those storefront tenant spaces. So as we move through this policy discussion, and while some of us may be focused right now really on window issues, and the majority, I think, of the report talks about that, because I think that's where we're seeing the tenants having some struggles or difficulties complying with those regulations, we may have to look to compensate or make other changes to some of these standards regarding building composition, windows, doorways, in order to balance these standards back out. So if we, if we give a little bit more in terms of allowing for some opacity to some of the storefront windows, then we may need to look at other standards, architectural standards, like awnings, in term, to create that, that compromise. So I talked a little bit in the staff report, and I, I won't go over, and I don't want to sound preachy about it, but there, there is research, there are longstanding policies in terms of regulation for these types of features in these types of neighborhoods. We have a choice here where we either regulate in some fashion, and we've got to come up with standards that work, or we don't regulate at all and it becomes a free-for-all. I don't think anybody, long-term, will be happy with no regulation. We reached out to American Planning Association and asked for information, not only from Wisconsin communities, but nationwide, what some of the standards are. And you, you can see at the end of the staff report, as I list other regulations that we'll continue to look at as we move forward, I've laundry listed some of those. But really what's happening here is we have a number of great businesses opening up, for one, or for varying reasons, are struggling with maintaining 100 percent transparency for all of their windows and doors. And I think the, while the Mequon Town Center project that's constructed gives us a great set of examples of some of the varying issues and some of the varying solutions that have been applied, this has really been a longstanding policy issue for the city of Mequon in all of our commercial districts. We've, as staff, have been asked in the past to follow up on some matters in buildings on Port Washington Road. We've had a number of circumstances in the Pavilion Shopping Center, as well as some other retail and service buildings. We could probably, you know, any of you who drive around the city could probably point to a couple of scenarios that you see out there today. So I just want to be cautious about how far we take this policy directive or change because it could have precedent-setting nature for businesses on Port Washington Road. I will acknowledge, though, and I did state in the staff report, that I think our greatest impact, whether we're successful or failure in implementing this, will be noticeable in town center because of the placement of the buildings. So I'd like to, yeah, run through, I guess, some of these scenarios. At this time, we've heard from enough business owners in the development that's been constructed that we really do need to find some flexibility and, and some opportunity for them to market their product, present their brand, and allow for a little bit of, of flexibility. So in terms of, and I, I will add, we've, we've held off on enforcement or citations until we can get through this policy discussion. So what I've done is I've reached out to all of the business owners, asked if they would be interested or willing to walk around the site with me. Not only did we reach out to the business owners of this development, but we did call in stakeholders, previous planning commissioners who were architects, business owners, developers, those who have done development throughout the city and within our commercial area. So one of the things we want to point out, I think, as a successful treatment, and I will tell you that everyone that I walked the site with agreed that architectural design solutions are preferred alternatives to look at at the onset of, of construction and the development. Collectivo, I think, is a great example. Of course, they're the type of use who has locations in other more pedestrian-oriented neighborhoods. They also know that their customers are coming there to kind of linger and socialize, so they're making those spaces very comfortable for, for that type of activity. Collectivo immediately installed awnings. We do allow signage as part of your awning. You can see here what the awnings do in terms of creating some shadowing for those window spaces, so their customers, and those of you who have been in there, can pick up on the fact that every one of the windows actually has a place to sit. So they know that their customers want to kind of look out, you know, look at, you know, see and be seen as they're lingering in the store. But further than just the architectural awnings and the details that provided there, some of their outdoor spaces, of course, transition to indoor-outdoor spaces. So they've got their garage door open, and you can see in, oops, you can see in this top photo, they've created basically a covered porch as part of that dining space. So that creates additional shading when these windows are closed, but it also provides protection from inclement weather, so you can still be outside while maybe the weather isn't as great, including rain. One of the other highly preferred alternative solutions to, to the window covering is the shadow boxing or the window display. These are hard because they're reflecting so much from the sun, but Collectivo on the backside, so facing the parking lot, near their rear entrance, has a window display. The colors within that display match the colors of their awning. This is an image of, of their brand and logo. It's one of three bays that is covered. The reason it's covered is because on the interior, it's the backside of their restrooms. The other image is Elements Massage, and I think those of you who were on the commission about a year ago recall that we had three bays facing Cedarburg Road. They were actually granted the flexibility in their floor plan to have what is essentially their front door and their lobby space to the rear. That left us with a little bit of a challenge on what to do with each of those bays. The commission allowed for one of the three bays to also be a window display with shadow boxing. So they've committed, you know, they've, they've dressed up the window box, they've got interior lighting that lights up the space in the evening hours. They've committed to changing that out seasonally. We've talked about opportunities, you know, to frame and hang their menu of services so that as pedestrians walk by, you know, it's something that you can learn a little bit more about, about their, their business. One of the comments that I did get is that there's the doorway here to access the display window. It's actually what is the backside of the door, so you see the hinge and you see all the hardware. One of the architects had pointed out to me that with a little bit more thoughtfulness on our end, we could have had the other side of the door facing the public, and this would have been flush. So lesson learned on that one. Another example where I think all, if not all, the majority of those that I took through the site were thought that a perfor, oops, can't get this thing right, a perforated decal that still allows visibility into and out of the tenant space. So what you're seeing here is, is a desk area, like a front-entry desk area, and this is, you know, like the tabletop of the desk. You can still see people actively, you know, working behind that front entrance, but this is a perforated decal applied to the window. You can't, I thought you could see it better, but it's right, it's right in the space of the window as well. So it's not completely opaque, and it relates, this is Orange Theory's tenant space, it relates to their brand because it's, it matches their logo. One of the other items that we talked about as a, as a solution similar to that perforated decal is a perforated or a decal that bands, is, is placed as a banding across the storefront window. Like these other options, we're going to have to talk about technical standards. One of the tenant spaces that faces Cedarburg Road, again, has their front entrance facing the parking lot, and so what we're seeing on the Cedarburg roadside, while I think is still cool because you're still seeing activity, you've got an entrance here to the storefront, but you kind of see into the kitchen and you see the employees making chocolates and candies, and, and by the way, they manufacture and distribute to seven stores out of this 2,000-square-foot space in Mequon, so they're doing a lot of production here. But I walked by a number of times and I waved to everybody making chocolate. Hopefully, they'll give me a free sample when I come back. One of the things we talked about here, though, because there's some shelving units and, you know, maybe some boxes of supplies down at the bottom, you know, kind of picked up off the floor, that the opportunity to do a decal or a band, maybe for 30 percent, you know, whether that it's at the top or at the bottom, gives the business owner an opportunity to hide some of the maybe more cluttered stuff from the pedestrian and from the public space. And I think Elements Massage, you know, had talked to me at one point, too, that they were, you know, having some customers talk about, you know, the, looking at the service portion of that, of their, you know, of their business on the public roadside and wanted to see maybe that kept a little bit tidier. So it would give some opportunity for, you know, hiding some things. But these bottom pictures, then, are a couple examples of how that banding could work. The other thing we touched on as an example of what we're seeing out on the site is window treatments and the solutions related to those. treatments and the solutions related to those. These are all facing the parking lot, so the interior of the site. These businesses, the top two businesses, are having a challenge with the sun on the west facade, especially this time of year. The heat, even if it's not full sun, on a cloudy day, it's still getting hot enough that there's damage to merchandise and perhaps a loss of merchandise. So Get Happy Chocolatiers is using a roller shade to completely close up all of these windows. If we were to allow some sort of treatment, you know, one of the comments that we got was that, that banding with a decal, a name, you know, that says Get Happy, or Get Happy Chocolates, or whatever it may be, while those shades are down, you're still providing some element of interest and detail in those windows. Then we have tenants who are using curtains to be able to close and keep the heat and sun out of that lobby space. And then we've got an example on one of the buildings where there's a treatment on the east facade or the main entrance of the building, but the treatment is different on each side of the door. On one side, a film is being used to create opacity, and on the other side, we've got a curtain treatment. Most of those who commented on these different, these varying solutions with window treatment suggested that if the city were to allow for a window treatment for a temporary circumstance like sun or heat, that they'd prefer to see a roller shade versus the back of curtains or the film. The film just tends to look like an afterthought. It's really the cheapest, probably, solution. It probably negates their warranty on the windows, and then the curtains just feel more like a residential treatment. It's not as commercial or polished or sophisticated. So I think if there's an opportunity to allow for this type of treatment, we would want to be more specific about the type of treatment and the timeframes associated. We have circumstances where we have 100% screening on the parking structure. The first floor of the parking structure, we've got 100% film as opacity on those windows. You can see another example of it on the west facade as you head, you know, to the north and back by City Hall. I think we probably would have benefited here by having maybe a laser cut of this logo through that, so it would be the reverse of this, but at least, you know, the rhythm of that, like in the center of each one of these windows, I think would have been more appropriate. And I think Jack and I would suggest, like at City Hall, if we're getting to a point where we know we have the nitty-gritty and the service portions of these spaces, like the parking structure, that we would maybe rather see architectural treatments versus windows. So here's an example on the side entrance of the City Hall, where you've got broken panels of block here where a window might have otherwise had been. Same thing, it's flanking, this is your front door, when you walk into City Hall Lobby off of the parking lot from Cedarburg Road, you can see on each side, you've got that same treatment with a light fixture. I think we'd probably rather see these types of features than windows that get applied with the 100% screening to them. Some undesirable solutions, and I didn't want to necessarily pick on existing businesses, so we've, these are a little bit hard to see, but, you know, we've got situations in the metropolitan area, you know, where the blinds are down, the blinds get wrecked and broke, and they're all over the place. Here's examples, these are some examples out in Peewaqui, in their shopping area where, like Water Street Brewery is, Marshall's, Starbucks, all of that, they have completely, I mean, all of the buildings have completely blocked up, you know, all of the windows with 100% filming. And this isn't, these aren't, this isn't really a pedestrian-oriented area. I mean, it's still a shopping center where you're driving probably from lot to lot, but I think this would have even a worse impact in the neighborhood that we're trying to achieve. We also looked at and talked about signage and merchandising solutions, these types of decals to identify, you know, the name of the store, the service, with your hours of operation, completely acceptable, those are permitted as part of the sign code. And then we do have some tenants who are doing some shelving and merchandising in both of these cases. Everyone felt that this was tastefully done. What was important here was that it wasn't the, all of the bays were shown to have shelving and merchandise, but the merchandise also faces the public sidewalk. The signage is facing the public sidewalk, the lighting is facing the public sidewalk. So obviously, you know, they're acknowledging the pedestrians and the location in which they're entering the building. These are some entry solutions. The middle one is hard to see because of the reflection, but these are solutions that have been applied within the development as you enter the residential units. We've got a couple locations where you come in off the street where you're entering the residential areas, or a vestibule that was intended to go to commercial uses that isn't. What you see here, what you can't see here, I guess, is the Mequon, this is the Mequon Road vestibule on the south building where Ruby Tap and Forward Dental are, there is display of artwork in there, as well as a table and rugs, and so they're trying to do some solutions to that, but I think you can see that there's been much more attention given to those residential entries. As you know, because the planning commission talked about Forward Dental, and we're still trying to work out a solution with Forward Dental, but obviously, the type of land use affects the treatment. So I highlighted in the staff report that we may have to, if we're going to allow for office and service on the ground floor, we may have to come up with some specific standards and criteria for that. I wouldn't necessarily recommend that we no longer allow for office or medical uses on the ground floor. I don't want to create such, with 100 acres, I don't want to create so much retail square footage that we end up in a situation where we've got vacancies on the ground level when we've got opportunities for other tenants there. But, you know, we're dealing with some issues in terms of blinds and coverings as part of Forward Dental's space. You can see here, and I'm sure as all of you have driven by and hopefully walked by, that their chairs are facing the front. This is an opportunity, again, where if we allow for some coverage, then maybe some other architectural details and elements need to be part of this building. And this is just an example of the east facade for Ruby Tap. Again, you can tell that the type of use that it is, is generating a different type of feel and activity, obviously, on the outside of the building. So, you know, this is just to compare, I guess, awning solutions. Again, nice detail, it identifies the entrances, you can see this building is a little bit flat and could benefit from awnings. You know, at the time, we had looked at pushing that building a little bit further back to get us more space, but we ran into an issue in terms of being able to get the parking lot with the parking counts that we wanted. And then the last comment, I guess, is vacancies. You know, we've got the storefront on the north, most northern building, closest to the City Hall driveway, that's yet to be vacant. It would be nice if we could allow for some opportunity to somehow activate that space, even though it's vacant, whether that's some signage or some pop-up art that's on the interior. I think allowing for the opportunity to that would be wise. These are just some treatments, just some examples. I'm sure these are in much more, you know, suburban neighborhoods than what this one is or what we're trying to create here, but you can see where they've created a banding on that bottom, you know, 25% here. You can tell here where they've done some architectural features as part of this target building and the entryway and walkway in here, in lieu of the entrances, which is pretty nice. And then these are just, I think, some examples or some comparisons. This is, I think I commented in the staff report that I don't think we'd want to see reflective glass. This is a storefront that's completely filmed, you know, covered over film, it's reflective, you can, you know, see the sandwich board sign as a mirror image here. We've got a dental office that, while they did a nice job of trying to create some pictures of people with, I'm sure, really great smiles and white teeth, I don't think this is ultimately what we want to see up and down all of our storefronts and our public streets. And here's, you know, example, I guess, of where there's some compromise, you've got some banding, maybe about a third of that storefront window being covered, but you still see in and out of that space. I think, too, if we allow for some of those window displays for merchandise, we're going to have to talk about making sure we establish some technical standards for the depth of those, so that they just don't become real tight, narrow spots, because I think in this, you know, this example, you start to see where you can't achieve as much interest. And then I think, too, you know, they've left, while they've done their best to do something interesting here, this has been left completely blank. So those, I think, are just some good examples of solutions that we're considering. I would take planning commission's comments, also, I think, to the common council meeting in August for a committee of the whole discussion, just like the one we're having here tonight, to get their feedback and direction as well, and then start to develop some technical standards related to these preferred options. I'd also then like to give the various stakeholders that I have met with and asked for their input on this, I'd like to give them an opportunity to absorb some of those technical standards and provide some feedback. Two things are going to need to happen, though, we're going to need to do a text amendment to both the Town Center and Arrival Corridor zoning districts to further, I think, communicate what the intent is or what the options are here. And then we're also going to have to come back and do a modification to the specific approvals that were granted to the development on the corner, because we had the vague, you know, standard about, well, I shouldn't say vague, we had, we think the intent was complete transparency, but because now we've added those specific conditions to their specific approvals, even if we change the code, they're going to be held to a higher standard. So we're going to have to come back and amend. I think that probably works to everybody's advantage, because we can probably come up with some creative solutions for the existing circumstances out there, and get both sides perhaps happy on this issue. So, feedback and preferences, dislikes from anybody?
Once we create, once we create these standards, and I agree with preferred, acceptable, unacceptable, and the stuff you have down here.
Okay.
I agree with all that, but once you create the technical parts of that, we're going to have to apply that to each individual business as they, as they get built, as they come forward, as they change. And in the condition, in the case of the 100% blockage, like the dental clinic, there has to be some conditions where that's allowed, some situations where that's allowed, and that has to be spelled out, I believe. Otherwise, you know, I think you got the categories correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question as to why that parking structure at the Town Center has to have its windows opaked.
Well, that's what we're trying to prevent.
Why was it done?
Yeah, I'm not, you know, I don't-
What was the rationale?
Well, I think it was because people thought there would be a preference to not see the parked vehicles, although my opinion, as you're walking out there, there's a row of parking in front of the windows with the surface parking lot. I would probably be less offended by seeing the parked vehicles on the inside of the building than the treatment that's currently there. And there's an inconsistent treatment to it, too. Some of the windows are more opaque than others, but that's in part because of what's behind them.
But why did they do it? That's my question. Why are they hiding the interior of the parking structure?
Well, I think they did it because it's a parking structure, and they assumed it would be preferred to not see that.
Pardon me?
I think they assumed that it would be preferred to not see the parked vehicles and headlights and-
I have one question and one comment. Question is, can we get to a point of technical standards that are going to be good enough that we're not going to be in here having debates in gray areas? I mean, I don't know if it's possible. So that's my question, and I guess I would follow up with a comment. I agree wholeheartedly with your preferences, and I thought you gave us great examples of it, but I think, I think there's going to be some new, there's opportunities that we haven't seen. I mean, as you drive around the country, we're going to see other ideas, and so I think there's got to be some flexibility-
Yes.
-even if we do have technical standards, to let people present. But then that comes back to the gray area, and how do we really define it? My last question is, or comment is, is enforcement. I see this becoming a major enforcement problem, especially as this gets larger, and what are the penalties, and what does the city, what legal rights do the city really have to enforce? So those are my thoughts and comments and concerns, but I really do agree with everything, your preferences, I liked, I was completely in agreement with what your suggestions were.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to be, nor do we have the resources to be like the blinds police, and that, that doesn't feel good for anybody, you know, to be, that's not good business relationships either, right? Knocking on their door, and they only hear from us once a year, and it's because we're complaining that their blinds are down all the time. I think, like with anything else, we want to sponsor flexibility and creativity, but we do have to have a common baseline or a common denominator that we all find acceptable. I think there could be circumstances where we may have to, under unusual circumstances where something doesn't fit the code, you guys still may see that. We have a situation out there where one of the buildings has most of the windows covered 100% opacity with film. And I don't know that I can write a code to suggest that that's okay under that one circumstance, without setting a precedent. So the other part of this is, as we are able to hopefully express these technical standards, we also have to recognize that when people come forward, we might have to say no to some of these circumstances. So hopefully, the more expressive we can be about what the expectation is and the flexibility that we're granting, that people can work within those. You know, one of the things I talked about before, too, I mean, just whether it's windows or anything else, we pride ourselves on better architecture and design, and we don't, even with the architecture of new construction, we don't typically accept, you know, the cheapest solution. So I don't want to be in a circumstance where accepting cheap solutions here either.
If we can get people to submit their ideas before they do them, then we'll have a better chance.
Well, when you talk about a large development project like that, she doesn't know what her tenants are going to be yet, so, you know, as you talk about not having windows in a space and use architectural features-
Right.
-well, that's great, until, if she had 100%, and even that, her tenants aren't necessarily 20-year tenants, they're going to be renewed, so you've got to have some flexibility, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is a window coverage question or a signage issue, but in my experience, one of the nicest handling of windows at a commercial structure is in Fox Point at an Italian restaurant, which I think is called Caradero Club. It's at the intersection of Bradley Road and Port Washington Road.
Calderon? Calderon Club?
Pardon me?
Calderon.
Oh, Calderon, yes.
Okay.
At any rate, it's neon, and it's, to my mind, the most interesting neon signage I've ever seen. It's done in two windows.
Interesting as in good?
Pardon me?
Interesting as in a good example?
Yes.
Okay.
I love it.
Okay.
We'll have to go there.
Thank you. Kim, I like the process you're going through, walking through with developers and businesses. I do think that the developers should have the design standards or whatever document we're working towards here included in the leases, so that the tenants are put on notice. I just think it'd be a really good idea. It's tempting to say the enforcement should be on the developers, you know, to force, you know, because it seems like the tenants are blaming them when they come forward, you know? So definitely do not, I prefer roller shades, I really don't like the curtains and the film, and it just looks so cheap, and this is a really nice development. I think in certain situations, like the HIPAA stuff and, you know, medical privacy, it certainly is a good justification, but anything else, it does start feeling like that slippery slope. I go there.
Okay. Thank you.
I have to concur, film has to be the ugliest solution.
Mr. Mason?
So I'm glad you're trying to address this or are addressing it. We'll never get it 100%, and there'll always be variations, but I think this is certainly going to make it much better, and we'll have less discussions sitting around this table. But if we go to the one that we were challenged with was the dental office, so would the roller shades, would that work for them? I mean-
It does.
I mean, so they put the roller shades down during the day, they take the roller shades up at night, is that acceptable?
The representative from Forward Dental and I tried to get in touch last week to walk the site together. We have not done that, although we have communicated before this meeting. We're still going to do the walkthrough.
this meeting. We're still going to do the walkthrough. I think they are asking for some type of screening to be able to use at their discretion. They have, I think, more of like a honeycomb blind right now or shade. And I will say that while they're using the blinds, even though they're not really supposed to be right now, they are, you know, exercising judgment on when to do them, and they've also somewhat changed up and decorated, you know, one of their storefront windows, too, to look a little more summery. So I don't, I don't, I can't, I can't represent the applicant right now or the, the business owner right now and tell you what they would agree to or not to agree, agree to. I think they're just looking for some flexibility and some solutions.
Let's say they did a honeycomb shade, so would, and they put that down during the day, is that acceptable? And then they raise the shade at night, is that acceptable?
You mean 20, like, all day, one?
They put the shade down during business hours when people are using the dental office, the chairs, right? And then at night, they raise the shades, is that, would that be acceptable in these guidelines?
I would not, I mean, I would not write that particular element into the code. I mean, that might be one of those circumstances, like maybe one of the other businesses that has 100 percent opacity on all of their windows. If that's truly what they want, then they're going to have to probably come here and make that case. I think the biggest challenge will be, and it's not just with Forward Dental, but it's a couple of the other ones, like Elements Massage and Get Happy Chocolatiers, is how are we going to regulate the use of the blinds regardless of what style or material it is? And I think that's one that I'm still struggling with and probably don't have a solution. And I did also have an architect who walked the site with me. You know, we, we looked up at the second and third stories, too, to kind of evaluate, are we concerned about what's happening there? It looks like they were probably installed or granted all the same blinds, but eventually that would change over. You know, we may, if you had, and I don't know that we would, but if eventually we had a structure that had even a greater amount of glass as part of the overall style and architecture, even on the second and third floors, we may, at the time of the PUD approval, we may want to talk about what kind of window treatments have to be mandated as part of that project, because you could get pink curtains on one, you know, window and then neon green and then black on the next. I mean, it could look not so great. So those are a couple of the things that we're going to have to kind of work through yet.
If, I think it's a good start, and I agree that, like Dan said, that your categories seem reasonable. But I hope when you take all this, because right now it's very broad, we keep it simple, a little bit light-handed. Already, I, I hear some of our judgments, like when you were giving the, the example here, you say, oh, that window has a deeper area for display. That's better than the shallow one. I think it's more effective. Well, that's kind of getting into people's business, if you ask me. They know what kind of display they need. You have to trust these business people to know that this is an area that they need to attract people. Even if they put in three, four colors of curtain, maybe it's a trendy teenager clothing shop, maybe it does them better. So, I mean, I'm going to watch as this gets developed, that we have basically universal guidelines. It's going to be hard to say to one owner, you can have this kind of shade, and the next one, well, no, you can't. You've got candy. You don't have dentists. I'm, I'm just saying, I would just be careful to keep it very simple, very straightforward, and trust the developers, I think, to, to, to do it the way they think it's going to attract their people. I think it should be more their judgment than ours. And then, and it's funny you mentioned enforcement, because those are the first roads, words I wrote. We can barely enforce our signs right now. We only have a part-time person that does that. And if this starts going, I think you have to present this when you go to council. If we start needing another full-time position for enforcing and interpreting, we need to know that upfront. And last of all, Kim, don't we have a rule, maybe I missed it in here, right now, you can only cover 25 percent of your window? I thought historically-
With signage.
Yeah, with signage, okay. Well, we've done that, we've done it, too, years ago. It was some store, I don't think it was Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, but it was years ago, where they were putting too much stuff in front of their windows, and we did enforce.
It was them, and we also had an issue with Blockbuster at one point.
Yes, yes.
And we had an issue with a bookstore who had an office space and kept the blinds down on the west window.
So we do have one way of enforcing right now, too?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And we have, we have taken enforcement action.
I'm, I'm saying it's a great start. It just, I'm going to look for the end details.
Yeah, you know, and I mentioned in the staff report, most malls will have regulate, regulations and design specifications on their storefront windows facing the interior of the mall, because essentially that's their street. So in terms of retailing and merchandising, this probably isn't that unusual or uncustomary to some of these businesses already.
I just have a quick question on the inconsistency applied, or having things consistent to the same building.
Mm-hmm.
Are you talking if it's the same owner, or can the dental office have something different than the chocolate shop even though they're in the same building?
Well, our intent is to develop what good design parameters there, there should be, and then allow each of the businesses to work within those parameters to present whatever creative design options or solutions they have. I mean, it's the same with architecture. I mean, we don't want to prescribe architecture to such an extent that you're not letting architects, you know, come up with creative solutions, because everything starts to look a little cookie cutter then.
Some of it ought to, ought to be based on need. You know, if you're going to pull down a, a roller blind, there has to be a reason. It's hot, there's privacy, but if it's a toy store, there's no reason.
Yeah, and I mean, in some of the examples, you know, we've got, you know, one of the retailers, I mean, Get Happy, that's a hu, if anybody has been in the, in that store, I mean, there's a huge investment in terms of showcasing the product on that west facade. I don't think there's an interest on that business owner's part to have the blinds down 100 percent of the time because she wants to attract people to come in. She indicated to me, you know, she overheard someone say, well, what is Get Happy? Is it a clothing store? And she's like, that's the worst, worst possible thing I could have heard. And so she wants her windows and blinds open and wants everybody to see your product, and that's a huge investment on her part. We just, you know, you don't know what the next tenant or business owner, you know, merchandising philosophy is, and so that's why we've got to write these rules for that lowest, I think, common denominator of what our expectations
I also think you need to have something written, kind of disagreeing with that the business owner knows best, because what's best for their business might not be what's best for the neighboring business. You know, they might think that the cool, different-colored curtains are great, but if you're next door to that and it doesn't look great, it affects the whole, the whole building.
The whole value.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And everybody's, has a stake in it and an investment made, yes. Okay, well, I appreciate the direction. I will present this same policy item to the council in August, and then hopefully we can get back in front of you with some technical standards at the September meeting.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We are adjourned.